Anyone in the chairs?
Yeah, absolutely. Except the gallows one.
There's a switch on the mirror. It's on the mirror end there.
You just moved that right back over there.
Pretty good, aren't you?
I'm sorry.
Come on, Mike.
I'm sorry. That's always good.
Don't even say that shit.
Hey, you're totally funny.
I'm Tom, by the way. Good to meet you. You're waiting for us.
Indeed, I at least this part of it for sure.
We'll give a couple of minutes.
I'm not quite six o'clock yet.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I took your hand.
And, you know, the principal and the building secretary sign off the checks. And so we signed a new thing before, you know, with our official teachers. And I was kind of going to push to this table behind my desk.
So I'm retired.
In there. Of course, you know, I remember her coming to me and going, actually, she's still here. She's going to be here soon. I was like, you're not going to be here too. There was. I was like, they've got those already.
If it's not right, it ceases to exist.
I'm too busy with that, so my time was limited.
All right, well, six o'clock has now come, so we'll go ahead and hear the DAC portion started. I do want to say thanks for giving the time to come tonight. I know that typically Tina Cass is the one who runs the DAC. And in future events, she will be the one, but she had a principal scheduling thing come up right at the end, so I'm going to fill in with that piece in terms of part of the DAC. As you can see, the agenda is pretty short in terms of the number of items, but we have quite a bit of important information to go through, so we'll go through that. This is, I think, I know we did some training and everybody was in the room during the trainings, but sometimes it was at different places, so there might be people in the room that are not familiar with others. So just as we always do, we'll just do a quick kind of whip around and let you go kind of who's who, who's on the team, what's going on. And so to do that, what we'll do is, you know, just state your name and your role on the DAC, whether the parent or community member, school, board member, whatever it may be. And then I would like to hear, here's the challenge, right? The one or two words, no more than that, and no hyphens and no run-on sentences, right? One or two words about why you elected to be or wanted to be on the DAC. So that kind of get, so I'm going to give like 30 seconds to, you know, I'll start with you.
Am I hurt me?
No, no, I won't, because I want you to think about those words.
Oh, okay.
Cool.
Yeah. What? I'm right in the middle.
I know, right? That's not fair. But I will start, so I'm Del Garrett, the Chief of Staff and Co-Interim Superintendent at this time. And so why I'm on the DAC is because Tina's not here tonight.
That was more than, more than two hours.
Man, I broke my own rule. Tina's absent.
There you go.
All right. Yeah, right? Compound words is terrible. So we'll go this way.
I'm David Rosterholz, and to learn.
I'm Ally Oriana. I'm a student, I guess student voice.
I'm Casey Guthrie. I'm a parent representative. My words would be community involvement.
My name's Seth Bryant. I'm a middle school parent representative. My two words would be student success.
Kip Hubert, middle school staff representative, unity.
I'm Michelle Howell, elementary from Summit, and my words would be involvement and service.
Ashley Lawson, Principal Gateway. My words are my turn.
I'm Bill Phelan. I'm the Assistant Principal at the middle school. I'm the Secondary Admin Representative. Mine are learn and offer.
My name's Aaron Hellstrom. I'm a parent on the high school, and my two words are leadership and integrity.
Hi, I'm Mick Bates. I'm a business person and I have grandchildren in the district. And my purpose for all of this is that our children are our future. Our kids are number one.
Mike Demuth, Merit Parent. My two words are, well, to be an example for my children. That's more than two words.
Amy Ryan, I'm a Gateway parent. I basically just wanted to get more involved in the school system. I'm new to the area, so I just want to learn for my son.
Welcome to the area.
Thank you.
My name is Tom Torrance. I'm the Administrator for the Alternative School, Panther Academy here, and I'm here to represent the entire high school.
I'm Jesse Seibert. I am a parent representative from Summit Elementary. My two words would be ethics and involvement.
I'm Sean Beckron. I am the Merit Representative, and my two words would be it's time.
My name is Jamie Dion. I'm a community member, and I agree with Nick. I think the students are the future of this country.
Kelly Haven, delegated to be here until you guys elect a secretary, and then I'm out of this portion.
Great.
Great.
Well, thanks to everybody. For those of us that failed on the two-word, one or two-word assignment, we'll just give us not yes, we'll give us not yes. We'll get better and better as we get.
Can I change my two words to does not follow directions?
That's right.
That's right.
Daniel, I've got a bad ear on your side. I didn't hear two words.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair.
I didn't hear.
All right. Okay, if you look at the agenda, the first thing, we got a couple of things. So if we're going to election of officers, that's the first one. And so just, and then later, after we go through the election of officers, and right now, the two that we're seating tonight would be the Chairperson and then the Secretary. And so I think everybody got an invite or an email to put your name in if you wanted to run or be considered for one of those two positions. So we'll go through those. And then after we get that done, our role then is to kind of dismiss the DAC in purpose of the agenda, but to really join the Board on the Special Education Work Session beginning at 6:30. So, and that is for all of the feedback and the discussion back and forth to the Board around next steps, next steps. And so we'll be talking about that. So I wanted to make that clear on the agenda. When we go to the election of officers, I do want to talk through it. A couple of things. On our website, if you haven't explored the website of where the DAC information is, I'm going to tell you where it is. If you go to the website on the Board tab, about three quarters of the way down, there is Accountability Committees. If you click on that button, it comes up to a page, a big old thing that says accountability. And then there's a DAC, which would be Representative of Us Tonight, and then an SAC. If you click on the DAC, you'll find all kinds of information. All of your names as representatives and what you do, no emails or phone numbers or anything like that, but your names. And then you'll find the DAC Handbook, you'll find the minutes, the agenda. All of that is located on that position on the website. So if we go into the chair, I just want to dive into the handbook a little bit in terms of what the chair responsibilities are, just as a reminder. We have how many, Kelly? Four? With four people who had put in their names as interest in serving as the Chair presiding over. So let's just go through a little bit, just a refresher on the responsibilities. For the Chair, the Chair is responsible for presiding over and facilitating all meetings. So you don't have to listen to me anymore. Number two, set the meeting agendas in collaboration with the Superintendent Representative to guide the team in reviewing targets, improvement strategies, and other elements of District Improvement Plan. To guide the committee in making budgetary recommendations. To ensure the DAC performs the duties outlined by state statutes and district policies. And to serve as a communication link between the DAC and the school board. That's the responsibilities for the Chair. And so what we'll do as we go through that is we'll give the four people who did put their names in, and that is Mr. Seth Bryant. There, thank you. Mr. Mike Demuth, I'm sitting over here. Mr. Aaron Hellstrom, sitting right over here. And Ms. Jesse Seibert, which is, I thought it was her. There she is down there at the end. So what we'll do is we'll cut, and that's just kind of the order that came in. I believe that's alphabetical. Yeah, so that's, see, I figured that out because I went to the last page. Anna says it. What we'll do is I will start, and I'm going to give you about, oh, I don't know, maybe two minutes to just kind of talk about the reason why you would like to be the Chair of the DAC. And when we get the chance for all four of us to hear, we'll pass out ballots and we'll take a vote of the DAC members for the Chair. Is that, any questions? All right, well, Mr. Bryant, because alphabetically, you are first, why don't you give us a quick one to two-minute little piece about why you would like to be the Chair of the DAC?
Sure, absolutely. Well, I have two students in the Woodland Park School District. I've got a middle schooler up at the grade seven and a second grader at Columbine. So I am vested in this district and student success for the foreseeable future. I believe that my student success is, you know, everybody's student success and vice versa. So I really think that the better we do as a district, the better all our kids are going to do. I have served as a Chairperson for committees and boards before. I am an organizational figurehead. I'm a well-equipped leader. I'm very familiar with helping groups drive conversation and facilitate open discussion. I also know how to help teams move to decision-making points. You know, sometimes those discussions need to actually wrap up and, you know, decisions have to be made. Really, I think I've got the ability to help this team deliver relevant and timely and well-positioned advice to them.
Great.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. All right, Mr. Demuth.
All right. My name is Mike Demuth. I'm a local Realtor up here. I came up with a few things I wanted to share with you folks here. Well, basically, I care about nothing more than I care about my kids' education, for one. I'm not afraid to voice my opinions, as some of you have seen me online. I'm kind of a loud mouth, but I'm not afraid to speak my mind. I'm a leader in the community and with our youth. I've been, basically, I've had a lifetime of leadership, starting as an Eagle Scout when I was a kid, restaurant manager and chef for 20 years. Right now, I'm a local Realtor here with EXP Realty here in Teller County. I coach soccer with Parks and Rec here in town, like second and third graders, and that's a whole lot of fun. I also sponsor teams. Right now, I volunteered with the Woodland Park School District, Merit Academy, done a lot up at Summit over the last 10 or 12 years with my kids going there. Let's see, my wife and I run the Divide Mountain Girl Scouts. Now, that's an awesome thing that we have going on here. I'm also the President of the local Teller County Service Unit, meaning I run everything Girl Scouts on the senior side of it. I'm the leader of the leaders. My wife's the treasurer. And so anything Girl Scouts basically starts at the top with my wife and I, which is pretty cool. We do a whole lot with that. We organize the annual Daddy Daughter Sweetheart Dance that's been going on for like 30 years now. And we do all that, and that's super fun. Last year was an awesome event. Let's see, our amazing parade floats, did you guys see the dragon last year with the flamethrower? That's my flamethrower. So let's see here, we also took 53 scouts to Yellowstone and Mesa Verde in the middle of a pandemic. When everything was closed, we decided, no, we're not closing anything. We're taking 53 people to Yellowstone. And then last year was Mesa Verde. We're also working with this thing called the Dock Park Florist. And if you've ever seen that, our Girl Scouts alone have raised over $13,000 to, in the community, to fund this. Right now, the girls and I are working with Eric Stone and Dan up at the County Commissioners Office to raise enough money. We're looking at probably bringing in a few hundred thousand dollars to rebuild that park and florist, which is very much needed. And that's between the county, the money that we've raised, and the Great Outdoors Colorado Fund. So that's a really cool thing we're doing. I have my opinions, but I'm also open to suggestions. I met with a friend, teacher up at Summit Elementary, Ms. Sherri Porter, a while back, ran into her here in town, and I was chatting with her. And for you guys who know her, she's pretty awesome. And she told me to give some advice. She gave me some advice that kind of stuck with me over the last few weeks. And she said, with all the devices that's been going on with the school district, that's been going on with the Board of Education and everything here in town, we need to be a voice that brings people together, because we have a chance here to make a big difference. That stuck with me. I think we can all heed this advice, especially in the positions we're in. And if elected as your DAC Chairman, I'll be ready to voice that opinion and can bring, I'll be able to voice the opinion that can bring people together for the kids.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bryant. Appreciate it. Mr. Hellstrom.
Good evening. My name's Aaron Hellstrom. I'm a retired Marine Mass Sergeant, 2012 year old. I like to think I've worked in the federal government. I understand government, but I was an Inspector General. My job is to go around places like Guantanamo Bay, places of high security, high biz, national interest. And my job was to get a win-win, to go in and do staff development, to do leadership training. I wrote down some of my stuff because I can't remember everything. But Ops Management, Acquisition, Integrations, Strategic Planning, Staff Development and Promotion, Performance and Quality Standards are things I did, Customer Satisfaction, Allegiance Leadership Development, Profit and Loss Management, Budget Planning, Engineering, Manufacturing, Change Management, Commercial and Customer Support, Strategic Partnerships, Facilitate 20-plus Board Member Meetings, Interact with Clients, Direct Cross-Functional Teams, Role-Aid or Sensitive Project Lifecycle, and Carry Out Budget Analysis and Lead Resource Allocation, including Labor Planning, Synthesize Problem Solutions, Develop Written Reports and Outputs Related to United States Marine Corps Enterprise Support Services For a Budget of $5 Billion. So I have a wide range of experience in dealing with civilian communities. I went to work as GS 13 at the Pentagon to write policy for Headquarters Marine Corps. And when you write policy at that level, you've got to get a win-win across the Board. We're talking about all different facets of life. My also job was to take what the President passed down in Executive Order and to break that down into what it meant to us as Marine Corps, and then put that in the policy for Marine Corps in that. So I have a good head on my shoulders. I understand the law. I believe in the Constitution. I believe in leadership, takes decisive steps, and makes tough decisions because it's our children that matter most, and that's why we make our decisions. Thank you.
Mr. Hellstrom. All right, Mrs. Seibert.
Again, my name is Jesse Seibert. I am a mom of three girls. I grew up in Woodland Park. I was one raised in Woodland Park. And I started out at Columbine Elementary until Summit was built in 1993. I was transferred over there and then went all the way up through high school up here. We moved back three years ago to raise our girls in the small-town environment that we grew up in. I have a fifth grader, a first grader, and a preschooler all at Summit. As of right now, I am an audit manager at my CPA firm, and I believe that my profession provides me with the skills and tools to be an asset to the DAC Committee, and that my education, my professionalism, and my dedication, along with the long-term ties, long-term and current ties to Teller County and Woodland Park School District, provides me with the dedication to be the Chairperson of the DAC Committee. Short and sweet, but.
Well, great. Mrs. Seibert, I would like to apologize for not pronouncing your last name correctly.
Don't worry about it. Everybody knows.
All right, so what we will do at this time is, Kelly will pass around the ballots here. I don't think, you know, we're not going to do to make sure it's all bubbled in correctly and with black pen. There's no hanging chads. No hanging chads hanging out here. A simple X or check mark would be just standing.
Can we take ballot selfies?
Ballot selfies, yeah, exactly. So after you are complete with your ballot, if you'll return those to Kelly. She'll walk around and then she'll tally those. Probably an awkward silence as we tally those. Probably it wouldn't be silent, everybody will talk to each other. But, and then we'll move to the Secretary at that point. Okay?
Make sure you're fine. Whoops. Sorry, Kelly. That's my phone. That's already my head visually moving on through like steps.
Are you students? Something.
Here.
So we're good. Kelly's. It's going okay? Oh, it did.
Yesterday was crazy. I had to spread out all the lunch, so nobody spoke. Had to manage, so. No, we were. I know.
So I was joking with that. Of course, it worked.
And we had one, I think it's a band, and I'm glad you were there. Thank you, I think I just went to a pass band. And stayed. Like, you know, our kids were up on, some of the kids were on jazz bands, but he stayed. And all his, I know this is, he's a choir recital after the musical program, but yeah. He was like, oh, stay and watch those kids.
There was like compliments. It was like they were waiting to get in.
And it's, is it middle school type of this time? Or just?
They did their own thing. I don't know if it was. I guess that would.
And how long have you been in? Are we missing? Does someone not vote?
Almost 18.
Did everybody vote coming up on 20? Yeah, vote here in 2002. Oh, you want 2003.
There's also a timer. Remember that because. All right, so let's go ahead and hear the results. All right, so after the tabulation of the votes for Chair, Mr. Seth Bryant has got the most votes, and so you have been elected as the Chair for the DAC. So congratulations.
Thank you very much. I will do my best to serve the district and the community.
Great, thank you. So, Mr. Bryant, I would not dictate, maybe think about. At the next meeting, when you're leading that, if you, if as a group you decide you want to co-chair, remember that's up to you guys, so maybe put that in your work, in your wheelhouse the next time, next time we do it.
Okay.
All right, thank you. All right, so the next officer position is that of Secretary. And for that position, we have one person that did apply and expressed interest in that, and that is Mrs. Jamie Dion. So, Ms. Dion, same opportunity. I would love to hear, I think everyone would love to hear, what made you open the email and say, hey, how about that?
Yeah, I'm curious why everybody doesn't leave the Secretary. I guess I want to take notes. I do a lot of project management for work, so I'm used to collaborating in groups. I'm used to taking notes and completing tasks and working with a group. So it's kind of second nature for me to do something like that. Do you want my job? Probably not.
All right, well, wonderful. So what's the word I'm looking for?
Elected by acclamation. No contest.
Yeah, elected by acclamation, so thank you for doing that and welcome to the team as the Secretary of the DAC.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Great, wonderful.
When there's no contest, that's why it's elected by acclamation, because everybody wins.
All right, well, great. So that completes the business portion of the DAC, where we've gotten those pieces together. At 6:30, I know that we will begin in the Board of Education Work Session, so all of our Board members will join us at 6:30. There will be a time during that agenda when we set up or we dismiss the DAC, not from a dismiss like please get out of here, but dismiss in terms of the role of DAC and the DAC would then be invited to obviously stay as audience members. Before we do that piece, we get to that point, there'll be a small break so we can rearrange things, is that right?
Correct.
So for the actual Board meeting itself, okay? All right, so I thank you for that, and we have about four minutes before Mr. Rosterholz will take over from the Board Work Session piece.
All right. I do want to say that Chris Austin is the other Board Member who is on the team, and he could not make it tonight. I won't tell you why, because he's out hunting and. So he couldn't be here tonight, but he sent me a couple texts today and sent, make sure I send a note to everybody, and then he'll look forward to being here next time.
Great. All right. All right, well, again, thank you for the conversation and definitely the election, and I look forward to, I know the leadership from this group and the feedback and the partnership with the Board is going to be much appreciated, so.
I look forward to having a lot more of these. I would like this to be a regular thing with the Board of Education because, you know, like our motto is, we are better together. And not any one person or small group has all the answers, but boy, together. It was really a passing, but me and my wife went. That's the new president of the school. But, uh, no, I haven't been for a little bit.
Yes. Yes. Rocky is, I'm like, Chris Brown. So excited to get in here. Middle school, you've got a seventh grade.
I know.
Thank you for that, yeah. Yeah.
It's okay. Let him get hot.
Over here, it's like.
Okay, perfect. I don't want to, but then like get up and walk out and do my job.
Actually grew up in Denver.
Um, sits here for.
What's your age? Did you sit here in town or?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're right. Okay, you're pretty close to me. I'm over in Stone Ridge. Yeah, we got here four years ago. That would be a really big question. I could have a hash here. So, um, what do you, what do you do? You work in the street or?
I work, uh, for Albertson's. Hi, guys. How's it evening tonight?
Good. It's not even that cold. Good job with the.
Are you kidding me? That?
Good job with the two birthday, I like that.
I was pretty bad at it. I broke my own rule like two seconds into it.
That's okay, you're kind of.
It is cold.
Supposed to put on the vibe, but we weren't, and so when we were walking, well, we walked off in the, um, beginning of the.
Where we live, oh, oh, oh.
I have it.
There's some sort of a vague going on down.
I never knew that.
That's pretty wild. That's, that's a good point.
Otherwise.
Are you, are you like?
Absolutely.
That's cold.
Then lived in, Arizona.
Okay. Lake Sevres where you were?
No, no, no. Lake Sevres around.
Power Springs, yes.
This is the whole thing, like.
How are you?
Have you been?
But we.
Excited about that. Do you go back then in the spring?
Oh, no, so they're meeting.
No, that, my, my whole family.
We're going to bring that, we'll start our meeting at a little bit.
Because like I had the funding this meeting, so it's not a meeting.
This is Michigan, right? So where were you?
Beginning, there's no calling.
Oh, I did it the wrong way. I knew it was something with.
Here's Detroit.
Yes.
Here's, um, yeah.
I mean, you could be here. Okay.
But so that town.
Okay.
I guess he did.
Well, I don't think.
Announcement, factory.
Okay.
Maybe I shouldn't be standing here talking.
The meetings can overlap.
Through my house, I, I want to hear, I want to hear all, so.
Oh, yeah.
So.
I do want to.
A lot of them did rest in house, right? Yeah, so did you laugh?
At least his wife was like.
I own I C Ds and then.
Stayed married.
I lived here, I grew up here, so. Except for the twelve years, so I went four years, but I loved here to go to college. I went to U N A B.
That's good. See, that's good.
My wife and I moved, she. So we moved up. Oh, you are? You were in Wenatchee.
Okay.
Now, where were you?
Everett.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay. Loved Everett, so we lived in Wenatchee, but my wife was from Long Beach. So South, logging industry. You moved up to Washington to be.
I'm already getting my back. I've had a text last.
Dad said.
I love you back. We're getting on like both sides and then.
Be back. Well, twelve years I was.
And you know, there's two words.
I need to know where.
My dad's classroom when I was a kid was about.
I remember you saying that.
About right there.
I guess to me it was interesting.
So did you grow up in?
I actually grew up in.
Okay. How old were you? I think we got here in twenty twenty-one, so in Everett.
I said this, right?
Let's see, trying to remember, I got stepped off and that's.
About twenty miles.
About twenty miles.
So the other reason is.
Everything's out of Everett.
I'm a marina, my son, and then when.
Ever.
Or not stand up and do anything.
Oh, you did in Everett?
Had to.
Okay, which high school, which school?
Middle school.
My son continues.
I taught at Everett High School, too.
Everett High School.
True.
Nice to meet you.
Yes.
Hop on.
I have a middle school and a high.
Eleven words.
I was, actually, yes. I was over there for the representative.
Absolutely, I was.
You know my face.
Middle school and a high school. In your middle school, at the middle school and I'm at the high school.
It was number one in the country, uh, one. Yeah, like, because I know they don't want to ask your number, so I gave her, she has my number and said, can I?
It's about ten, it's about.
And I said.
Done graduate, right?
No.
And what's that?
Oh, I'm sure. Someone else.
In that car over there. But yours, the rule or what?
So.
Was elevating. Yeah. Everett and Tunnels. It just didn't snow.
Not, not, not so much on the west side.
All right, everybody.
Cascades block it, so.
Second warning.
Five hundred feet maybe.
Thanks.
Again, appreciate it.
Oh, it sounds beautiful.
Everyone gets their snacks.
Coffee.
Good to see you. Are we all returned? Everyone here? All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Are we doing a roll call tonight for everyone?
No, just a roll call for the board.
Okay, roll call.
Um, Illingworth.
Here.
Kimbrel. Kim. Patterson. Here. Roster Holt.
Here.
And Austin is absent.
And our new Mr. DAC chairman, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance, please?
Absolutely. My pledge allegiance is in the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for a moment of silence, please. I'll read from our preamble to our Constitution of Colorado that we have all taken an oath to uphold. We, the people of Colorado, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of this universe, in order to form a more independent and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility, provide for the common defense, and promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
Question.
Second. Roll call.
Illingworth.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Roster Holt.
Aye. All right, this evening, I want to welcome all of you of the DAC members here and how much I appreciate you and kind of said something a little bit about that before. We are streaming tonight so that we can get as much stakeholder participation and as transparent and open so that people can, and from the community can participate. So, uh, the camera's over here, so your back, your head is your best side. So, want to welcome everyone here this evening. Uh, this evening's meeting is going to be about information and discussion with, uh, with you and, uh, we're going to be discussing the steps necessary to hire a district leader and, uh, our sub-panel, uh, subcommittee of Mr. Illingworth and Mrs. Cassin. Cassin, why do I always do Kimbrel, our, our, uh, subcommittee tonight? So I'm going to hand the meeting off to these two and we'll go from there.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for being here. Um, each of you should have the packet in front of you, right? Okay, and it was emailed out earlier?
It was emailed out, a draft version, I think it was that yesterday before and that today was updated and it's got the timeline.
So when we talk about the, uh, hiring process, a lot of it is going to center around these documents. There, there are basically three. Um, the first two, the administrative vacancy, and then this longer one that says interim superintendent. These are what would be posted, uh, if we choose to move forward with this, um, and so that's what somebody who wants to apply is going to see and respond to. But when we talk about the process, it's really more set out in what's called a timeline and that you'll see it contemplates that we would post tomorrow and then it would remain open until November twenty-ninth and then there would be a week-long screening period, uh, where we would possibly set up, um, phone interviews with various candidates, narrow it down depending upon how much narrowing needs to be done. Uh, there would be a, um, public meeting on December seventh, uh, where the board would select finalists, um, and then in between that would be, um, interviews of the finalists that would be done, what, what I'm thinking at least is that would be done kind of like this, it'd be a joint board and DAC committee, uh, to interview the finalists, um, all of them go. Uh, and there'd ultimately be a meeting on December twenty-first where, um, the board could select somebody by vote and then hire them. So this is the idea. Um, it doesn't have to be done this way. Um, we could adopt in the board, as you know from the agenda, anticipates taking action on these things, um, later this evening. But I would, I would note that of course, even if we do this, if we come through December twenty-first or we're in December and we're not satisfied with the process, it'll always be, uh, modified into public action and extended if necessary. Okay? So I will say that, um, Ms. Kimbrel and I have been working on this for a couple of weeks, um, with the documents, meeting with, uh, Mr. Garrick and Ms. Cassins, meeting with, uh, the board attorney, Brad Miller, um, one-on-one with, uh, President Roster Holt and, and, um, Ms. Patterson and each other. And we have, of course, talked about it in some public meetings, we've been getting a lot of emails, I'd say, over the past several days.
I will be returning a lot of those emails too, so if you've not already, if you've not received any reply from me, I will be getting back to you, so.
So, but the idea is to get input, to get feedback on, on things and I have, uh, just a discussion with you guys. If, if there are questions or concerns, um, that pop into your head, um, whatever you think, okay? So I tend to, oh, did you have something you want to say?
No, I was just going to start off with what we have listed here on the agenda, talking about title, you know, working through qualifications, timeline, vacancy notice and process.
So, let me ask, let me throw it open to you guys. Um, so when you're looking at your agenda, uh, row number four, B, receive feedback and it says hiring process to include title. Does anybody have any particular thoughts about the title? Whether you say we're looking for, uh, a superintendent or a chief executive officer or anything like that, does that have any significance to anybody?
No, that's significant. But if you're going to appoint him to be the head leader that works for you to direct this district, why not call him what he is, superintendent? Because that title plays into their future as well, you know?
And I, I tend to, okay, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Hellstrom. I think, um, it makes me think of, um, like the, the British monarchy, right? Like whoever's in charge of it is the king or the queen, they could be called the CEO, was the term of art within that particular context.
Right.
And, uh, of course, a superintendent is a chief executive officer. Um, I tend to think if we were to call him the CEO, we're kind of reinventing the wheel a little bit, like it would, it could create confusion amongst public and not just among the public, but amongst our professionals. And so we, we'd end up having to spend more time trying to define the position and we'd kind of just say, well, it's the same thing as superintendent, so. But you raise a good point about, you know, it also is for the candidate themselves that, you know, they could, you know, in the, in the, later on in their career, they don't have to explain to somebody, it says CEO, but I really, trust me, I was superintendent. Um, Mr. Bates?
I concur with Mr. Hellstrom, uh, whether it was interim superintendent or superintendent, uh, the way I understand this, it has the potential to become the permanent superintendent and I think we hire, based on that, I would like to see us get back to where we have been in the past with a single superintendent.
Okay, we got a bunch of hands, I'll just, how about Ms. Ryan?
So also you're looking for somebody with superintendent experience, so when they're doing a job search, they're going to look for posting that.
Say superintendent.
When you guys are applying, you just tell me your name first too. Just so I like get to know you guys, thank you.
Um, my name is Tom Torrance. Um, from my understanding, did you remove the requirement that there would be credentials? That the person applying for this position would have to have superintendent credentials? Is that?
Well, you say credentials, uh, we're, we're removing the requirement that they have a superintendent license. Of course, anybody who would be, uh, fairly considered or selected would have to be qualified, uh, one way or the other.
And our new Mr. DAC chairman, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Absolutely. My pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for a moment of silence, please. I'll read from our preamble to our Constitution of Colorado that we have all taken an oath to uphold. We, the people of Colorado, with profound reverence for the supreme ruler of this universe, in order to form a more independent and perfect government, establish justice, ensure tranquility, provide for the common defense, and promote the general welfare and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve our agenda for this evening?
A motion?
Question to approve.
Did I take that? Second. Roll call.
Illingworth.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Ruster Holtz.
Aye.
All right, this evening, I want to welcome all of you as the DAC members here and how much I appreciate you. We've said something a little bit about that before. We are streaming tonight so that we can get as much stakeholder participation and as transparent and open so that people can, from the community, can participate. So, uh, the camera's over here. Your back, your head is your best side. Want to welcome everyone here this evening. Uh, this evening's meeting is going to be about information and discussion with, uh, with you. And, uh, we're going to be discussing the steps necessary to hire a district leader and, uh, our sub-panel, uh, subcommittee of Mr. Illingworth and Mrs. Cassin. Cassin, why do I always do Kimbrel, our, our, uh, subcommittee tonight? So I'm going to hand the meeting off to these two and we'll go from there.
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Thank you for being here. Um, each of you should have the packet in front of you, right? Okay, and it was emailed out earlier?
It was emailed out, a draft version, or something like that, yesterday before, and then today was updated.
So when we talk about the, uh, hiring process, a lot of it is gonna center around these documents. There, there are basically three. Um, the first two, the administrative vacancy, and then this longer one that says interim superintendent. These are what would be posted, uh, if we choose to move forward with this. Um, and so that's what somebody who wants to apply is gonna see and respond to. But when we talk about the process, it's really more set out in what's called a timeline. And there you'll see, it contemplates that we would post tomorrow. And then it would remain open until November 29th. And then there would be a week-long screening period, uh, where we would possibly set up, um, phone interviews with various candidates, narrow it down depending upon how much narrowing needs to be done. Uh, there would be a, um, public meeting on December 7th, uh, where the board would select finalists. Um, and then in between that would be, um, interviews of the finalists that would be done. What, what I'm thinking at least is that it would be done kinda like this. It'd be a joint board and DAC committee, uh, to interview the finalists, um, all of them go. Uh, and there'd ultimately be a meeting on December 21st where, um, the board could select somebody by vote and then hire them. So this is the idea. Um, it doesn't have to be done this way. Um, we could adopt in the board, as you know from the agenda, uh, anticipates taking action on these things, um, later this evening. But I would, I would note that, of course, even if we do this, if we come through December 21st or we're in December and we're not satisfied with the process, it'll always be, uh, modified into public action and extended if necessary. Okay? So, I will say that, um, Ms. Kimbrel and I have been working on this for a couple of weeks, um, with the documents, meeting with, uh, Mr. Garrick and Ms. Cassins, meeting with, uh, the board attorney, Brad Miller, one-on-one with, uh, President Ruster Holtz and, and, um, Ms. Patterson and each other. And we have, of course, talked about it in some public meetings. We've been getting a lot of emails, I'd say, over the past several days.
I will be returning a lot of those emails too. So if you've not already, if you've not received any reply from me, I will be getting back to you, so.
So, but the idea is to get input, to get feedback on, on things. And I have a, just a discussion with you guys. If there are questions or concerns, um, that pop into your head, um, whatever you think, okay? So, I tend to, oh, did you have something you wanted to say?
No, I was just gonna start off with what we have listed here on the agenda, talking about title. You know, working through qualifications, timeline, vacancy notice, and process.
So, let me ask, let me throw it open to you guys. Um, so when you're looking at your agenda, uh, the row number four, B, receive feedback, and it says hiring process to include title. Does anybody have any particular thoughts about the title? Whether you say we're looking for, uh, a superintendent or a chief executive officer, anything like that? Does that have any significance to anybody?
No, that's significant. But if you're gonna appoint him to be the head leader that works for you to direct this district, why not call him what he is, superintendent? Because that title plays into their future as well, you know?
And I, I tend to, okay, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Hellstrom. I think, um, it makes me think of, um, like, the, the British monarchy, right? Like whoever's in charge of it is the king or the queen. They could be called the CEO, was the term of art within that particular context. And, uh, of course, a superintendent is a chief executive officer. I tend to think if we were to call him the CEO, we're kinda reinventing the wheel a little bit. Like, it would, it could create confusion amongst public, and not just among the public, but amongst our professionals. And so we, we'd end up having to spend more time trying to define the position. And we'd kind of just say, well, it's the same thing as superintendent, so. But you raise a good point about, you know, it also is for the candidate themselves that, you know, they could, you know, in the, in the, later on in their career, they don't have to explain to somebody, "I said CEO, but I really, trust me, I was superintendent." Mr. Bates?
I concur with Mr. Hellstrom. Whether it was interim superintendent or superintendent, uh, the way I understand this, it has the potential to become the permanent superintendent. And I think we hire, based on that, I would like to see us get back to where we have been in the past with a single superintendent.
Okay, we gotta put your hands, I'll just, how about Ms. Ryan?
So also, you're looking for somebody with superintendent experience. So when they're doing a job search, they're gonna look for posting instead.
Say superintendent.
When you guys are applying, you just tell me your name first, too. Just so I, like, get to know you guys. Thank you.
Um, my name is Tom Torrance. Um, from my understanding, did you remove the requirement that there would be credentials? That the person applying for this position would have to have superintendent credentials? Is that correct?
Well, you say credentials. Uh, we're, we are removing the requirement that they have a superintendent license. Of course, anybody who would be, uh, fairly considered or selected would have to be qualified, uh, one way or the other. But of course, it's not a legal requirement, uh, that we have a superintendent license.
Why, why would you remove that? Why, why would we not require our superintendent to have a license?
Why we don't require it, you'd have to ask the other...
Can I answer that? Um, we have two co-interim superintendents. One of them does have a superintendent license and one of them doesn't. And I would say that they're both qualified. And through all the emails that I did get, you know, that was something to consider. And so I would not want to limit that. I mean, I hope that answers your question.
Did, did we also remove that essay portion from the application?
Well, yeah, I mean, we can go over on that. Let's talk about the, let's go back to...
I don't want to get off track.
No, 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 we'll, we'll do the, I'll steer you back because I want to stay on title.
Okay.
And then I want to come back to you on that question.
Okay.
During the qualifications. And I'm gonna actually write that down, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we did have, uh, somebody with their hand raised over here, Mr. Bryant, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to concur with Ms. Bryant. The fact that I think that the title that we're looking to hire on should be one that gets us in front of the most qualified applicants. You know, I, I would hate for a qualified applicant not to consider our posting because there's confusion about what the role actually is just based off that title.
It does seem like, uh, consensus.
Seth Bryant is my name.
Superintendent is the better way to go. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Ms. Lawson?
Can I, um, ask a question? And this doesn't have to be answered right now, if it's more appropriate for a later time. But, um, it, can I just, I don't think that I know the rationale for why we're hiring a superintendent from now to May. Like, why are we not hiring one, like, permanently? Um, so, and, and that doesn't have to be explained now, if it's gonna be covered later. It's, I'm just, I don't think I know the background of that, so I just would like, be interested to hear that.
I'll tell you my thought on it. Two things. First, um, like I said before, we, doing this now, we're a little bit ahead of like that traditional permanent superintendent hiring season, which, you know, it's kinda January to March in your normal rule of thumb. Um, with this timeline, we could come to December 21st and we'd still be in a position that if we feel like we didn't like the pool of qualified candidates that we got, or we didn't get enough, or, you know, based on feedback and going through the process, you know what? Permanent really is the way to go. We haven't lost anything, we haven't risked anything, because we can modify and roll right into January and February and sort of open it up a little bit more, make sure we're, if we feel like, you know what? Yeah, there's not enough people out there who are willing to jump at this time. Um, so to me, it's a bit of a freebie to do it this way. But the second reason that I would want to see it successfully accomplished is because we believe that there are plenty of big things that need doing. And as you know, if we go through the more traditional cycle, that traditionally means bringing in a permanent who doesn't start any earlier than July. And I don't think that the sorts of things we're looking to do should wait until July to be really gone into. Um, and that's not to say, um, that it's like, well, okay, we, we wouldn't necessarily be bringing in an outsider because, um, like, Ms. Cassins has told me she wants to apply. So even if we were to say, you know what, Ms. Cassins, you've done a great job, let's make you interim superintendent, and, you know, there's a bit of a hope, presumption, expectation that this could go on permanent. It's at least putting Ms. Cassins in a position where she knows now she's got the wheel and giving her that Christmas break to really dive into some of the big things that Ms. Cassins is already aware of that are coming up. Just as we would give a new superintendent in the more traditional cycle, that summer break to get up to speed. So my thinking is even, whether we go with, uh, an experienced insider or an experienced outsider, that break is valuable time, um, for that person to assume the leadership role and, you know, do what they need to do and work with everybody they need to work with.
May I share with this group two concerns that have been brought to my attention from, from outside stakeholders? Um, one concern is that will we get qualified applicants? That, because outside of Tina Cassins, not, not talking about her, but talking about people, you know, outside who might apply, um, if they are highly qualified applicants, then there's a good chance they're already in a superintendent position. And would we be interested in somebody who abandoned a position mid-year? So that's one of the concerns that has been brought to me. And then another concern is that, um, the posting the position from just now till May has created some angst, um, in the staff and in the district community. Um, it, what has been shared with me is that it feels like that, um, maybe there's consideration for bringing somebody in who might clean house, was the phrase that was given to me. So just in my role on the DAC, I want to make sure that you're aware of these concerns that are out there around this short posting. Nobody's concerned about posting for a superintendent. You know, we all want stability, we all want somebody, um, strong and highly qualified to lead our district because we have fantastic things going on and we want to continue to move those forward. So nobody has angst about that. Um, the angst is that it, it feels like just, if you're just bringing somebody in or you're just bringing somebody in to clean house. So I'm just sharing that because it has been brought to me and I feel like that's part of my role here.
One of my concerns, if I can jump in here real quick, is, was with the title. And it sounds like it's pretty unanimous about su- superintendent rather than a chief executive officer. My other concern to the title was interim. And in my thinking, we want to hire the person that we believe is absolutely best for this job with the expectation they will be the superintendent of our school district. So instead of interim, I'm suggesting that, play back up. I don't want to see the same kind of situation we found ourselves with, with two superintendents in a room, where we have to spend a lot of money, uh, that going forward, if we plan ahead, we won't have to. So if we have a trial period or something rather than interim superintendent, then we've got a period of time where we can evaluate, is this person doing the kind of job that we want to have done? So I would think that if we have a trial period or...
Interim.
In, not rather than interim. Because to me interim, to me interim is a placeholder. You're, you're taking this spot until we find the right person. So to me, if we hire the right person with the hopes that it will continue to be the right person, that is for a trial period.
I think that's the hope for all of us, but it goes back to, you know, just having that interim title. So it is like, so we can see for that trial period. That's just my opinion, though, so I'm glad we're here. We have some hands, though.
I have a question, Casey Guthrie.
Tell me your first name again.
Casey Guthrie. If it's listed as an interim position, does that mean you'll automatically post it come springtime? Or if your interim person works out, will it just turn into full-time?
I think that legally, we could not, we couldn't have an interim and just say, you know, what, actually that person's permanent. I think that to go to permanent, you would always have to repost it and go from there.
And go through the process.
And have a process that's, you know, kind of like your...
And interim plus your new candidates would go then the full-time official superintendency interim process.
Right, there is some, there are some legal requirements on that, not, not that many, honestly. Kind of, they're, they're kind of what's in here. You have to have a public meeting where you select finalists, or can select one finalist. And then, you know, you have to have an interview with the DAC, and then you have to have a public meeting, you have to vote and things like that. So, but yeah, you would have to go through the same process. You can't end run and do an interim and then wake up one day and say, oh, actually, that person is now permanent.
So, and then we have another, well, Ally, yeah, and then Shawhaun. Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, so I don't understand it all fully. Um, it's not something that's normal to me. But, um, I did talk with people who are in my circle, um, the student circle, um, and, um, they showed similar concerns to Ms. Lawson, um, and, or the stakeholders that she's representing. Um, and I would also like to add, why are we having such a short period for, um, hiring an intern when we could have a longer period to hire a permanent position that we know is going to stay?
Like I said earlier, I want to get in, ahead of that Christmas break and not take that longer time period and then have that person start in July when it's put whoever's the chosen leader behind the eight ball in terms of the work to be done in advance of the next school year. So that's my thinking of it. And again, if this process doesn't work out, we can roll right into the traditional longer early winter hiring process.
Would you, next door first?
Okay, I, I think I just need more clarification. Um, and plus, I'm representing elementary teachers, and there were some concerns brought to me before coming here. I, I guess, um, the main question that has come to me from staff members, particularly at Summit, is, um, I, I guess we're confused, is there a problem or an issue right now with keeping Del and Tina? And if it is a problem, can we identify what that problem would be? I don't know if that question makes sense, or can we seek appropriate solutions to, like, having Del and Tina?
I would not say it's a problem, so.
So, we need to be a little sensitive here. Mr. Garrick is here.
Yeah, I, I...
Ms. Cassins is not out in abundance of, you know, wanting to maintain conflict-free and things like that.
Sure.
I don't think any of us would be comfortable being put in a position to say, that sound like we were evaluating Mr. Garrick's performance in front of everybody.
No, not at all. I think it adds on to what you were saying. It just seems rushed and if there's not necessarily, if it doesn't need to be done now, like, why now? And maybe seek a more, you know, permanent solution later.
I don't have anything to add because I've already, I've not even seen any...
I think I can answer that question on that one.
But if Sue or Cassie are thinking, want to say...
Cassie, you want to say something?
I, um, I, I don't use the word problem. I think, like, during some of the work sessions, you've mentioned, like, change agent. If there's someone that we need to, you know, have as a point person, whether it's just one and having that point person so that can make those changes and make those amendments, is sort of what I've gathered. I don't want to speak for the rest of the board on that.
And I, I apologize for using the word problem.
No, 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 I don't.
Because we, we really, as staff, we really advocated having Del and Tina.
Yes, and we receive emails like that, and that's why I'm like, I'm, I don't think that you meant that at all. I just wanted to clarify that I don't think that either, so, no. Please don't apologize for that.
So I hope my question was clear.
No, it's clear.
To me anyways, so.
Does anyone else have anything to add?
Yeah, you can.
We got a bunch of us.
Okay, Aaron and Sean and Jamie?
I think they had their answers before we did.
Well, I'll go. Um, you guys discussed this, though, this process two months ago to go ahead and get something in place. Um, I think it would be, since things started the semester, it'd be a great opportunity to go ahead and get the whole thing rolling. The teachers come in this semester, uh, and it's a new semester, they're ready to go. If in the processes, Mr. Illingworth said, you don't find your qualified candidates, well, then you pull back and then you're gonna go again whenever it's appropriate. Now, this has been done before. We've had superintendents come through, a pool of them, and the school board said, we are not satisfied with this pool, we pull back again. So they pull back and then they repost. I think it's a win-win because not only does it save us time, um, we have the advantage of, well, it's just a short term and we'll see how they work out. If they don't work out, um, then we can go ahead and reapply. There's no systems being done, there's nothing new that's happening, it's simple, it can be done, and it can be done expeditiously. I think it's a good idea. Yeah, I mean, we're kind of in the caper scene on this because, um, we're very pleased that, um, you know, Del and Tina seem to be doing a great job there, everybody's enjoying so far. I mean, I can be mad at this. Um, and so we're not in a position where we have like a gaping hole in leadership where we, um, have to jump too quickly. But at the same time, we always talked about this when Del and Tina came in, that it was, you know, they were gonna be carrying us through, but it was almost on like, almost like a month-to-month kind of thing. It was an indefinite time period. And we always said we would go into the hiring process and it would be a barret open process. We're not, uh, excluding anybody. We're actually sort of opening up the qualifications so that more people from within, uh, the community are gonna be able to apply. I mean, there might be, there might be other leaders within the school district or at Merit Academy that want to apply and would fit the qualifications, so. Um, this is a follow-through on something that we discussed. And like you pointed out, Sean, and I don't know which hiring process it was, but if you start late and you're not happy with who you get and you have to go back and adjust, whether it's changing your pay, changing qualifications, bringing in, uh, one of those, like, recruiting firms or whatnot.
Head homers.
Time is burnt. And now you're kind of like, are we getting the second, you know, strata of people? Have other superintendents that we might have been able to get in January, have they already gotten locked in? And now we're dealing with like, maybe not quite the same, you know, level. And here, we're getting a jumpstart. Uh, Mr. Torrance, um, after, uh, Ms. DeYoung.
Yeah, I'll just echo what Sean said. I think that, uh, it's very common in workplaces to do probationary periods. And I think that this district has continually got it wrong with the superintendents that have been hired. And from a taxpayer's perspective, we should not be spending any more money on multi-year contracts that are not right. So I'm in agreement that we need to do a short-term contract, evaluate that individual. Are they doing what's, what's expected of them? Do we think their performance should give them a long-term contract? I do not think we should walk into another multi-year contract with a superintendent.
Can I ask you a follow-up on that? So are you suggesting that we hire a proba- probationary period interim for hire the, what we think is the best and will be our full-time permanent?
I mean, it should be, it should be one of the same theoretically, right? If you're hiring the best candidate that you have, the highest caliber candidate you have, and you're putting them through a probationary period, ideally, that's the person you want to stick around.
So just to keep us back on track, are we good with title? Are we gonna go into qualifications then? Because I feel like we're already on there a little bit.
It seems like we've said the qualifications.
I just want that, well, because then I want to go back to your question anyways, but I didn't wanna... Are we getting to qualifications? Is everyone good with title? Does anyone have any other questions or comments about title?
I've got, so I've heard from our administrative staff, the concerns of teachers. And I've heard from parent's side, the concern for leadership. And I'd like to just say, I think we're all coming from different understandings and there needs to be a background established as to why. And in my opinion, the background is, the board has been appointed through election and a recall that failed, which is a mandate from the public saying, we want action now. We want to see our schools now moving forward. That requires leadership, whether it's interim, whether it's probationary, you know, that's semantics. Let's talk about what we need to talk about. We need a leader who's in place, who will take us where we need to go. And I don't think any leader's gonna come in looking to, uh, hatchet teachers. That's the, first of all, you can't do that. And if they did, they'd be fine, they'd be in trouble. So teachers didn't even have to worry about that.
Well, let's get back to qualifications.
But we need leaders here, and we need someone to...
Nice, thank you.
So, where it's, well, oh...
So, bottom, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, you finish up the bottom line.
Well, Ms. Cassin, you're right, that's me off.
No, I was gonna ask the bottom line, what you were gonna, of what you were saying, that we need to hire of the full-time superintendent, or you're just saying that that's semantics?
I wouldn't go full-time, I would do what you said, check them out. But here's why, here's why. This is off our Board of Education for the state, local school boards. This is your responsibility for accrediting their schools and ensuring that academic programs offered by their schools meet or exceed state and local performance expectations for attainment on the state's key performance indicators, i.e. achievement, growth, post-secondary, workforce readiness. Local school boards also are responsible for creating, adopting, and implementing a performance improvement priority improvement or turnaround district plan, whichever, going through. This is why we need a superintendent, for this reason alone, so that we meet our goals, so that we don't stay lagging because of COVID, so that we can take decisive steps, so that we're next year in the upswing.
So I, I need to comment on that. Um, right now, our leading indicators to the high school are at historic highs. Our SAT scores are higher now than they've ever been compared to state average. We've been slowly growing even through the pandemic.
Yes.
And...
I was referring as a state, we as a state are lagging.
So, and, and the high school is, is the pinnacle of education. Like, that, that's where they go before they go out into the world. And, and not only, we're only successful as a high school because of the kids we get from the middle school, because of the kids that the middle school gets from the elementary schools. So when I look at, at those SAT scores that are through the roof and climbing over the pandemic, I think one of the concerns, both of staff and perhaps students, is that when you say things like changing, like, we have made inroads, like, on our, on our achievement scores, so it's a little scary for us because the superintendent does have the power to fire people, right? You don't, but the superintendent does. And so...
Actually, we have to prove anybody who's fired or... Actually, we have to prove anybody who's fired or hired.
True, absolutely. So I think that's one of the concerns, like we're doing really well. If you look at our scores, they are phenomenally higher than the state average.
But why did the board get relegated because of culture?
I don't see that, I don't see your SATs unfortunately, the, them being through the roof. I believe they're barely above the state average, so.
They have constantly.
Gentlemen, in any case, this is off track.
Yep.
We're not here to debate the SAT scores. In my opinion, they could go higher, but that's another agenda of meeting. Mr. Torres, you had your hand raised for something else though, right?
It was just a comment on that.
But I do want to go back, since we're talking about qualifications, and talk about your question on the essay questions, and, and sort of like, what did you think of those, or what are your importance of? Did you think, I just, back and forth, what?
Yeah, so did we, I just want to ask, did you take the essay questions off of the application? What was the reasoning behind it? Because I feel like those could be used at all.
I mean, why do I need essay questions around a professional? I mean, the resume is gonna speak for itself, and getting references from, you know, places of employment, such things like that, I think that's more important than 500 words about how you're a great leader. To me, I'd rather do references and face-to-face and things like that.
Yeah, I was sort of asking like those essay questions of person, to sort of get that on-the-spot answer, but.
Is that what college application needs to mean?
Yeah.
Versus like seasoned professional, you know, so.
Yeah, I guess, I guess it's perhaps it could help with the sorting, like you could see the person's voice before you actually met them, you know, like, ah, I don't like that. Feeling perhaps, yeah, perhaps.
Perhaps, and on the other hand, I think to, I don't know, you know? People read things the wrong way, and there's a different tone sometimes.
And I can tell you from a teacher perspective, filling out those essays when you're looking for a job is. So like.
Yeah.
What'd you say?
It's a pain.
It's a long, okay, all of it, so, okay, all right, well, I like that you had.
Well, men will get more people because of like, I have to write an essay for this one.
Well, you get the right people because they don't have to write an essay.
Oh, man. Well, I appreciate your opinion on both sides of it, thank you. Anyone else about the qualifications?
Yes.
I know we're removing the licensure qualification. Is there any way to still have the same kind of standards as licensure would require as far as background or experience or just professional credibility, if that's what you're saying? I, I know that's maybe kind of hard to derive because you're gonna have to look at the licensure process, but is there any way that we can still?
Well, on, on the packet under the qualifications, it says prior superintendent, assistant superintendent, or comparable administrative experience, preferred ability to cultivate positive energy to workforce, I mean, knowledge of collaborative school to find a well in assessment, careers in making tough decisions, and then I also want to talk about an email that we received from the president, Woodland Park Educational Association, Nate Owen. Not to clean out Nate, but I do want to read some of this in here. Exceptional skills as a communicator, consensus builder, proven success with educational experience, which is sort of administrative experience of maybe you can write educational, but we're just trying to see, you know, is there something to mine that you're talking about?
I, I work in an industry that derives credibility out of licensure and certification, and really, it's just the framework there that helps, you know, support that, right? And I'm just wondering, without that qualification, what kind of framework are you going to use to qualify the position? And is it those, those bullet points that you mentioned, or that you mentioned in the qualifications?
Yeah, there's some bullet points, but you know, we were just.
That's the framework.
If there's anything you can add, or if there's something that you see, like Nate also has like an advocate for public education with related community organizations, so someone that's very community-driven, that's going to be a cheerleader, that's sort of how I perceive that, Nate's shaking his head, so I'm, I'm doing good. So we need strength, integrity, and someone who will work with all current stakeholders to meet diverse needs of the district and stuff like that. So if you think of anything while we're discussing it, please bring it up as far as something that's on here, I would like to.
Was Nate's, was Nate's email forwarded, did you guys receive that?
I think these are emails to the board, I don't want to, I just wanted to, as the representative wrote, I want to, but I think.
I thought that Nate, Nate's email was very succinct, and it represented the teachers very well that, that he wrote, and he had the five qualifications, and, and I really want to make sure that those, and I think that we are pretty much in line with that, and have those five qualifications within the qualifications.
Knowledge of child growth and development was another, I'm just trying to, sorry, so.
No, just saying, I mean, I think we can all agree though, that like credentials aren't everything, right? I mean, there are plenty of people who don't have a doctorate and only have a high school degree, but they can do incredible things. I think like experience, proven track record matters more to me, and I also come from a profession where licensure is mandatory, right? You cannot practice law without a license, and you have to go through a very, you know, particular process for that. Some states do allow like apprenticeships, Colorado is not one, but anybody who's dealt with lawyers is gonna know they are not all equal, even though they all have what it takes to practice law in the state. It's about a proven track record, it's about results. And unlike lawyers, the state of Colorado does not mandate superintendents to actually have a license. So I don't want to, I, it'd be I, just me, would not want to restrict otherwise qualified applicants who haven't been able to do the time to do the license, or, or prior to this did not see it to be a necessity to their career or something. And of course, there are plenty of people who can take the job and then further their career and further their development by seeking that. So, that's just my thinking.
Ally, oh, sorry.
No, Ally's, I want to hear from Ally.
All right, um, so I know that all this legal stuff, it's the qualifications and everything, but I feel like really the most important thing is the person's values, especially for the students, because we are, if you put us in a pyramid, you guys are at the top, but really, there would be no pyramid without us at the bottom, we are the majority of this. So I feel like the person needs not only be, have a title, a job, but have that job be part of their life and be involved in the students, while still doing all their job stuffs that they do. But I feel like the students is the biggest part of the job.
Yes, it is.
So values, I mean, I'm trying to.
Yeah, you'd want to have, I mean, anybody who doesn't have a real heart for educating children, you know, from the youngest to young adults, is probably not going to be very successful at it. And I think that's true, obviously, that, that gets more true as you get like with teachers and counselors and, but. I, I don't know, I doubt there's many principals and superintendents who were not previously teachers and, you know, worked their way up, so, but. And if you don't have a heart for it, you're not gonna be able to stick with it, so I think you're absolutely right on that.
How would you quantify that in a, the bullet point?
I think that, I know it's not exactly possible, um, because there is only one of me here, but, um, I think that the students need to get an opportunity to choose who they want, really, and I know that's partly my voice collecting other people's, um, but also, I just, I don't know if it would be possible to be able to have the, um, candidates interact with the students or go into a classroom and be able to just have a feel for what it's like at the school, because even if they have that passion, they might not be right for this school particularly.
You know, one thing that I would like to just say to that, I would invite, when we're doing the hiring process, invite students to come to the meetings, because they're all going to be open meetings, and submit questions that you'd like to ask to the board of directors, if we can ask those questions.
Or maybe Ally can help with that.
Ally is part of, I mean, that's the idea of, of you on the deck, right? That you're representative from the student body.
You know, she's.
I believe we've had students on interview committees before for a principal of Woodland Park High School. I believe there were students on, actually on those interview committees, so it's not unprecedented.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, did we have some other?
Now you're on.
From qualifications, are we gonna move on? So when we see qualifications, we'll move on to.
Are we seeing any qualifications?
So qualifications, anything else, Sue?
Can I, would you like to read it, or would you like me to read your five qualifications?
Well, I sort of read some of them.
Would you read them?
It's up to you, if you'd like, I can.
You have a bigger print than I do.
No, no, you can.
Are the five qualifications the certification and license, or is there something separate?
Separate, well, no, it's not part of licensing. It is something that Nate had recommended from the teachers at the, in the school district. And it's in no particular order, exceptional, exceptional skills as communicator and consensus builder, proven success with educational experience, knowledge of child growth and development, good problem-solving and decision-making skills, and an advocate for public education with related community organizations. So the other thing is, we need strength, integrity, and someone who will work with the current stakeholders and meet diverse needs of the district.
And Del made a good point, he said those are really traits, you know, since it's the stuff we're looking at more, which we're gonna keep that in mind too.
And I think that those sorts of things that Nate says are pretty much restated in the qualifications here. Exceptional executive skills, ability to cultivate a positive and motivated workforce, student focus, inspire culture, greatness, and innovation and growth of the district. And, and I think this is, Kelly, I mean, this is what was used last time, was it not?
Yes, Les.
Yes, yeah. Is there any difference between this and last time, other than the license, the license and the removal of having them in the certification? The five essay questions.
Yeah, we just tweaked it.
And obviously, we updated a lot of the district information as far as staff numbers, enrollment numbers, the financial teams.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah.
We should say, Kelly, do not, do not look at us for that, Kelly helped us.
Our school.
Do I see a hand?
So.
Are we done with?
You had your hand up.
I do, but I think it fits more in with timeline, so.
Okay, okay.
Well, timeline is next, so.
So you're up?
Okay. It was a question in regards to the interview process. When you interview candidates, do you have administrators, teachers, students, community members sit in on the actual interview?
So looking at what we, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
So looking at what we've got here, you're gonna see there's, there's basically sort of two interview things, right? There is the Google Meet phone interviews, and then there is the Board and DAC will conduct interviews with finalists. The Google Meet phone interviews are not a full board. They're, they're a bit more ad hoc, it might be a combination of a board member and another leader or a teacher or something like that, so it's not gonna be the board itself, it's a bit more informal. And part of that is that, you know, I, I think Mr. Miller expressed this at our last meeting about, if people are gonna be applying, they don't want to go public with the fact that they're in the mix until they're like selected as the finalists. We saw this with our last superintendent, Matthew Neal, right? There was suddenly this announcement that he was on an airplane to Alaska to interview for the anchor superintendent. I didn't know that was happening until that was publicly announced, so. I think we anticipate following a bit of a process like that, and it's the goal to always have, you know, as much of the stakeholders or the public, or, you know, however you want to term it, that there is always going to be diverse viewpoints and the diverse needs of the community represented throughout the process. But I gotta tell you, it is my goal to make the DAC the centerpiece of that, because that is what the DAC is supposed to do, and that's why it's particularly stocked with people from, you know, educators, administrators, parents, community, business.
Student.
Student. The various schools are all represented. So I think that if we funnel this through the DAC to the greatest extent possible, it will be more efficient, but also giving us that diverse community input in the interview process. Of course, there's always going to be public comment and feedback and emails and things like that. I think you guys are gonna start getting emails, because I've already seen some chatter, you know, how can we communicate with the DAC and things like that, and that's, that's all to the good, right? I mean, we, the whole point of the, the main point of the DAC is to increase parent engagement in our schools. So if we have people who are saying, hey, the DAC is part of the process, well then, people are gonna want to be part of the process with you guys.
So we would actually be a part of the interview?
Yes.
Not just hear your feedback.
No, you're part of the interview, you'll be asking your own questions, so.
Can I elaborate? This is for the interim, but if we had a superintendent one, it would probably be even more interviewed, more drawn out, more public. So even this, if we were to go through this process, which we would have to go through, we're permanent, no matter what, if I learned estate law, would be, you know, increasing all of that, all that transparency. So I just wanted to add that, because you were talking about that earlier, the permanent position, and I just wanted to clarify that, so I hope that helps.
Other follow-ups based on what we've been discussing? Start.
Hi, I'm Bill Phalen, and I, this is a combination of timeline and process, so I apologize for hijacking that a little bit.
It's kind of hard to separate.
Yeah, yeah.
I will, I will hold it against you.
So we had a survey that went out to staff members and parents and probably others. Do we anticipate that the results of that survey are going to be back in time for us to use that in the process of selecting this person?
Yes.
Yeah, it is scheduled to, to be, I'm sorry. The results of those surveys that went out, that were just a multitude of the survey covered board and superintendents.
Right.
Those are scheduled to be tabulated, I believe it's the end of November, I'm looking for.
When is it? Yeah, twenty, yeah.
Twenty seven thirty, yeah, twenty seven, that's Sunday.
I have a question from the surveys.
Okay, I won't write that down. Approximately.
Is it?
It's November twenty seven. It's approximately. I'll write it down.
So, so to answer that, then, that, those surveys results would, would be available, if you look at the timeline before the November thirtieth, beginning of screenings, so that's, that's the intention.
So my follow-up to that, in, and, and this is the process part. We all participate in, or most of us also participate in, an individual school accountability committee. Is there some way that we can take time, go back to that school accountability committee, get some input from a larger group, especially of parents? We have a lot more parents on those committees, not that there aren't parents here, but we have the opportunity to get feedback from a larger group of parents, and I know that that is a cornerstone of, of what the board seeks, I, I know that that, that interaction with, with parents is paramount. And I think to have that opportunity to go back and talk with our school accountability committees, get some, get some more feedback, get a little bit more insight into that process, and then offer that as part of the interviews, it, it allows us to, to get a wider, wider viewpoint of what more people want.
How would you see that working? If you, if you were to go make the plan tonight, how would you make it work?
That is a great question. I think part of it goes into the timeline side, because this is, this is a quick process, so our, our school accountability committee meetings are on the sixth, I believe.
Yes.
I'm looking.
They're on the sixth.
We would need to, so we would need to think about how, do we want for the screening interview results to be brought into those accountability committee meetings and talk about candidates? Do we want to talk more about process and what kinds of things we want to hear from the parent's side? I apologize if that isn't a really clear question, or a really clear answer to what you're asking.
And, I mean, it's a great idea, obviously, yeah, you want to involve the SAG and make sure that that's another, that's another track to get that sort of input and bring it into the process in an essential way. That, you know, having that on the sixth, that would be the day before, under the timeline, that finalists are selected, but we would not anticipate sharing any names publicly, you know, before that, December seventh. So I think, but I think that does give you a great opportunity to be thinking about how you as a member of the DAC would be interviewing the finalists that are selected. And so it's a great, you'd be having an opportunity to meet with parents and say, hey, this is, you know, this is coming up, I'm gonna be a part of the interview process, you know, please, you know, let me know what questions you want answered. And there'd still be a pretty good amount of time there. And there'd still be a pretty good amount of time there before that, that interview is accomplished.
So, so we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily take information from the school committees into the screening process to select the finalists, but we'd absolutely use that information, that feedback, in the finalist process?
That's how I would see it.
It would certainly be...
Can I, can I make a recommendation that the board directs us to do that? To go back to our school accountability committees and get feedback with the specific intent of applying that to the finalist interview process? Just, just to formalize that.
Yeah.
That aspect, and that's...
I'll tell you, Bill, I think that legally, we cannot, at a special meeting, we, we're not able to suddenly change it and say, you know what? Adding an action item, we're directing the DAC members to go back to their SACs. I feel very confident you guys are all gonna do that.
I wonder if our chairman can do that.
Hold on, hold on, Aaron, before you talk, but I'm gonna go back to you. I would suggest that, you know, you guys, not directing, but I would suggest, and would really appreciate if you guys did go back to the SACs and get some interview questions, and questions that were good for the finalists. And so, that would be, I guess it's December eighth to December twentieth, because it's a sort of a wide range, but you guys are meeting on the sixth. And that would give us, if you guys could get some of those questions for the interviews for the finalists and send them to the board, I think that would be very helpful, because it just creates that feedback and those questions that we wanna hear from parents and from the SACs and different schools and principals and... And I would hope anyone would be welcome to do that.
Mike, so the, the whole point is to involve more parents in that process, because obviously, that's a, that's a big part of that.
Oh, I appreciate it, thank you.
Aaron.
Aaron, first and then, yep.
So, I'm reviewing our DAC binder, and under the first quarter says engagement, that we, the DAC, are to review the outcomes from the preceding climate and culture surveys or action plans. When are we, as a DAC, gonna see that? We're talking about the survey, and we're talking about getting into our SACs, but when are we, as a DAC, gonna get to review it and talk about it?
Kelly or Del?
Yeah, it'd be probably at the same time published, when we do the publishing of the entire piece in the end of November. It'll probably be that, those are two together.
That's because it's still in work session, the survey's still not completed yet, so we're just waiting to get that feedback, and, and then the other part.
Who put the survey together? Did the board do it?
No.
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 Who formed the questions?
Superintendents.
So, I'm sure with input from other leaders.
I don't know. May I jump in there? So, how do we assure the validity of these surveys and their all-encompassing of the entire stakeholder community? Not a small section that will then use this, the A survey, to direct policy instead of on the stakeholder holder survey? And then giving it to a small portion? I mean, how are we validating these surveys? And we take examples, are we doing what needs to be done to make sure that these surveys are as true as possible?
What oversight did you have as a board?
As much as...
That's my question.
As much as we want.
Well, with the survey that's out right now, how much oversight did you have?
And, and not, not losing track, to Ms. Lawson is next. The survey questions were done at the initiative and at the will of the administration. Like, Cassie and I were consulted on a couple of questions related to superintendent, but that's my, that's my involvement in it. Whether Sue, or David, or Chris were involved in other things, that's, the survey is basically an administration creature. In terms of the controls on it, those are put on it by the administration, and we'll, I mean, we'll have to leave it to them to answer, understanding, of course, that that's not, that's not the whole reason we're, we're here tonight, I don't want us to get too off track. From my perspective, whatever comes back on the survey is gonna be, I'm gonna read it and review it, and it's gonna be part of the totality of the circumstances, but, you know, what it's, what it's worth, it's kinda like when you put evidence to a jury. I mean, I may think that the, this, this is the smoking gun, but it's up to the jury to determine what credibility or value they give it, if at all. And that's gonna ultimately, since the discretion lies with the board, that's, it's gonna lie with each individual board member determined, not only what they're doing, but what they're basing their decision on, whether it's a survey, whether it's the hearing from the DAC, whether it's hearing, you know, that one email that comes in that just, you know, it's like it was written by Yates or something, and it cuts right through to you and changes your mind, I don't know. It's hard to, it's hard to predict that.
Yeah. You know, another thing is, the survey really has nothing to do with the search or the qualifications of, of the superintendent. This will be added information as public input. And I think that what David, Cassie were saying for is, you gotta stay on, let's, let's stay on track with this, this agenda, and then discuss surveys, because all these survey questions are very, very important questions. I, I think that they're very important, but to get through this meeting tonight, we're gonna have to...
We have Ms. Lawson and then Ms. Dion, I think? Did I have anybody else?
Well, we have, hold on, yeah. We have to have some fun.
So, I, I think I just wanna clarify a little bit, the survey action. The school district traditionally, and for many purposes, produces surveys to get stakeholder feedback. In fact, it's one of the stated core beliefs of our, of our board that was just implemented last week. That was the, that was one of the core beliefs, that we go out to stakeholders now. And then, and I know that perhaps there was, you know, the stakeholder wording on that would mean that was not done intentionally, but I think there's an assumption that the survey is at us versus them, or I got you, or this, or that. It is not that. The survey is, is simply a data point based on a couple of things. One is, all of the stated goals and objectives that the board has in some way put out to either Ms. Cassis and myself in terms of different things that are happening in the school programming-wise, those directions that we are at, we wanted to get some stakeholder voice on that. The calendar, which was tabled at the last board meeting, also was requested to have some, some voice back to that, and so that was included in that. And then some stakeholder voice for the superintendent piece. And so, we, Mrs. Cassis and I did meet with Director Restor Holtz and Director Kimbrel. As a, as a, I'm sorry, did I say Restor Holtz? I apologize.
It is Mr. Lee Worth.
Yes. As part of the assigned and voted upon subcommittee at the last board meeting. So, we, we did meet with, with the board, subcommittee in relation to those, and shared the survey, and did have some feedback back and forth, so that it, that it would go out. We also met with our, our merit representatives, Ms. Nicole Wagner and Dr. Glenn Beckron, who agreed that the questions themselves probably weren't related to merit parents in that particular situation, that this was a school district data point. And, and that's where we get caught in the semantics, the school district, they are part of the school district. So, we, we're caught up in the whole, what do we call everything now? We're six of the schools, that is the district, but some decisions, some data points may not be applicable to merit, because they have their own board, or they have their own, you know, leadership, and some may be. And so, we did have that conversation, albeit after the survey went up. But we did want to clarify with them what their intention was to provide feedback in this process as well. So, I did wanna clarify what the intent of that survey was for. And I did wanna clarify that it is not, it is gathering the information to have a data point for discussion for leadership or the board, or whatever that may be. It is, it's not a, while the board is doing this, or the DAC is doing this, we're gonna gather data to show, that that's not the case. That is not the intention of that survey. I wanna make that very clear.
And I did appreciate, and it's great that you guys met merit and offered the chance to participate in a group like that. Definitely, Ms. Lawson's been waiting for a little while.
Yes.
That's all right, and I totally respect that we need to get back to, to the topic on hand. I just wanna make one comment about the survey, because one thing that has come out of the last year's events is, you know, that there is a cry for transparency, and that there is a cry for voices to be heard, you know, across the district. And that, one of the things that we have worked on as a district and that we've talked about, you know, you guys have talked about it on the board, is establishing two-way communication with everybody. And so, a survey is one form of establishing two-way communication. And my concern, I'm just expressing it, I don't expect a change or anything, but my concern is that there are questions on the survey about whether or not the district should move forward with this short-term superintendent hiring. And so, my concern is, is that we're not even gonna look at the results of that when we are starting this process tomorrow. And so, I just, I don't want it to create any further tension in the community, because people responded, but it's clear that, that decision has already been made to do that before survey results are even gathered.
I, well, I would say that it, I think you're absolutely correct in that, like, it could be, I think you could bring up a great point about the perception of it, and that we would not want these survey results, which we do want their survey results. But I also don't know if our timeline is, you know, if we choose someone, if we don't find someone, if we push it back. So, I mean, even if we don't find the pool of people, we probably need to get that out, that we might be extending this as well, if we don't get any applicants, or if we get, or if we get to find the perfect one. So, there needs to be a better way.
At least one, because Tina's gonna apply, so... You know, and I, I understand that that's a perception issue, but we gotta get the ball rolling. And...
And we should share that and move the why, so hopefully, you guys can help with that as well, and we can clarify some answers to continue to work on this, too. Because I'm sure you're gonna get emails and stuff, too, and if you can port them, or if we can help you out in any way, I would be... Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, going back, this is a whole other topic, but it, it's right into what you just talked about in terms of the, of the DAC getting emails. And so, I know one of the challenges that we have is that, how do we get that information to the DAC? How do people get it, not, not the district, how do people get information to the DAC? We don't have your emails published, we don't have anything like that. So, I throw this out to, to Mr. Bryant, as the chair of the DAC as well. We, we do have the ability, if it's, if it's what everybody would like, to create school accounts for the members of the DAC specifically, so that that availability for people to reach out directly to the DAC is, is available. So, I'd like to just put that out, because I know the communication back to the DAC has come up a couple times now, and it's been a challenge, because your name's thrown there, and there's no other way to contact it. So, to kind of circumvent the, well, go to your principal, then go to this person, then go to this person. If there is something, we have the ability to create dedicated accounts for each DAC member.
We should have been talking about your principal hat, not the DAC hat, so I'll take those off, but thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and I would encourage that we come up with some process so that members of the DAC can receive emails, whether it's school accounts, or it comes to a DAC account which has been disseminated to personal accounts or something like that, whatever. I think that would be a really good thing for everybody.
Mr. Bryant, yeah?
Is there a formal request process to get those started, or, you know, so that if we make a decision as a group, whether we want that or not, we've got next steps already?
The formal request would just be let Ms. Cassis and I know that that's what you want, and then Miles and his team will make it happen.
Thanks, Miles.
Just to help that speed on, yes.
Yeah, can I just get a copy of the questions that were asked in the survey? I am not a parent in this district, but I am a taxpayer, and I am a stakeholder.
Yes.
So, we need to consider those folks in these surveys as well. Because if you're gonna use this information to help influence decisions, we need to have everybody involved.
I also had a question, just to go back, excuse me, on that briefly. But I read somewhere that a household was being able to fill out a solicitation for a, for one, for the survey, for each student in their household, which I think is somewhat, it's unorthodox, in my experience. Usually, we do send out one, for one survey to one household. But then I read where each student in the household, so if you have six kids in a little part of the school district, then you were to implore, or request it to fill out a survey for each one of the six kids. So, that kinda raises questions about validity as well, for me. And I don't, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you are not wrong, that is a, that is a point, that each student would have a, a unique survey attached to them, and so the parents. The idea there is that perhaps there are, there are parents that their view on that survey may differ from child to child.
In school to school.
What's that?
In school to school.
In school to school.
You have a kid at Columbine, you have a kid at the middle school.
So, it was a, it was a fair, from our, from the perspective of what we're trying to gather, again, not a, you know, a electoral college, we're doing a vote for staying. It's an input to the, to the district and for the board to say, you know, what, what does this look like? And so, there, there could be families that say, you know what, for my kindergartner at Gateway, I like this, but the middle schooler, I, I like this. And so, it was to get the, the opportunity for each, for the parent to speak to each individual child's needs and how it might impact them.
Was this the first time that was done? This is per survey, that that was about to happen?
That's correct, this is the first survey we have sent out.
That, of that?
Yep.
So, it's very, it's very exciting.
Okay, so...
Off the survey, okay, James, okay.
No more surveys.
No more surveys.
Thank you.
Questions, okay. Survey says no more surveys. So, we will continue with any questions about the timeline. We do not wanna stop unless we are done, because I wanna value our time together. If you guys are done with the timeline, we will talk about the vacancy notice. There's some chattering amongst you guys.
Well, if you wanna know what we're saying, I'll be glad to.
Oh, no, 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 hold on, we're gonna stay on topic.
Just saying, it's on topic.
All right, well, if we're done with the timeline, we're gonna move on to the vacancy notice. Timeline going on, start, okay.
Now, this, this is the vacancy notice. We've already talked about this quite a little bit, honestly.
Then we have talked about it.
Qualifications part and things like that. Does anybody have any comments on any other part of the vacancy notice? On the timeline or qualifications, maybe? I mean, there's, you guys all seen the salary and benefits highlighted there. Anybody have any particular concerns? I, I can certainly say that this is comparable to what our last superintendent's contracts looked like.
What does that compare to as far as state average for superintendents, for districts of our size?
I think it's gonna be competitive, based on... Matthew Neal used to love to compare us to the Elizabeth School District, basing on, like, location, and how close are you to a big metropolitan area, and number of kids, and everything like that. I don't know if he was right or not, but that was always the way he used to look at it. And Bill is nodding vigorously.
I'm, I'm familiar with Elizabeth a little bit, I used to work in Douglas County, so I had to pass Elizabeth all the time to get there, and they were very comparable in size and makeup.
Other two.
We left them moving there.
We lost out on Ms. Kimbrel, but anyway. Anybody else have any other questions or concerns on the vacancy notice that we have not talked about? I am not seeing any names raised. That's okay, because we still have something else.
And if you guys do ever have questions or come back later, I do encourage you to have an email at the board, or at least, you know, me.
I mean, so the last thing on here is process.
I do have one, James, but I see it. Yes, I know I'm not a member of the DAC, but I didn't know if the board was gonna catch it. But on the selection procedure, where it says interviews with selected candidates will be conducted prior to December seventh, that's in conflict with the, the time, updated timeline.
Oh, yeah.
So, we'll get to... So, do you want that to stay between December eighth to December twentieth? Or prior this two, how do you guys wanna, the language to go on?
I mean, it's like, so I can hear... Are you talking about the Google Meet interviews? I think that's what we're like, interviews with selected candidates will be conducted prior to December seventh? That would, no, 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 it wouldn't, yeah.
No, that's, that's right, though, Kelly, because that, because that separates from...
That's what you mean, is for the Google Meet?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because then it says finalist interviews will be conducted.
So, do we wanna just say, Google Meet interviews with selected candidates?
I mean, I don't think we have to say Google Meet.
Okay.
I think it's, it's accurate, as it stands.
Okay.
So, I, 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 I don't wanna hijack this again. Can I recommend that the, the procedure say preliminary interviews with selected candidates will be conducted virtually, and then whatever date needs to be there? Finalist interviews, and, and my question is, are we assuming finalist interviews will be in person?
I would hope so.
Then I would see, my recommendation is to put finalist, in-person finalist interviews with the Board of Education and other representatives will be conducted, whatever dates you need to put there.
What do you think, Sue? Do you think it's a suggestion?
Should we say DAC, or do we want other representatives? I know, we could probably discuss this during our... discuss this during our things, we'll figure out, we can discuss this.
In general, I like the suggestion.
I just wanna make sure, person, in-person finalist interviews. Did you have anything prior that interviews with selected candidates will be conducted, like the Google Meet ones, or did you just talk about the second, the finalists?
So, I committed again, preliminary interviews with selected candidates will be conducted virtually, whatever date is decided.
I knew I was missing something, I wanted to clarify, thank you.
Awesome.
All right, thank you.
And, and I mean, is there anything else, guys?
I just wanted, I like the comment about, this is a freebie. This is an opportunity to open it up. You could argue timing and various things. However, you're not committed to anything by going through this process. It's just another avenue to see, see what is out there, to throw a lime in the water and see. So, I'm generally encouraged with the, the process as it is set up, because we're not committed one way or the other.
And, you know, one thing that I've been hearing is, and it does seem this way, but the typical hiring process takes approximately a month and a half to two months, is what I've been told, is what it typically takes. And so, I mean, we're in that.
About two to three months for a longer superintendent role, since we're doing this preliminary, or, you know, visionary, or interim, or however we wanna point it, it's a little bit shorter, only because of the timeline. But at the same time, I think we can also, there was like, we wanted to extend that timeline open or have more interview questions, I think we're also open to that too. That answers our question.
Does anybody else have any closing remarks?
I have something that I wanna bring up that is completely off topic. And I've reached out to several people about this. Dave, I was talking to you about this earlier today, the crossing guard, the crossing guard for Merritt Academy and the middle school is refusing to stay out there for Merritt.
I'm sorry, you guys, I have to police this, you guys are off topic, you guys do have to follow a set agenda, this is a board.
I'm sorry, but, but that has to be fixed. If a kid gets hit out there because she doesn't like Merritt, we're gonna have a big problem.
Public comment or reach out to the board members individually, it just can't be right at this time.
Okay.
We need to have.
She, she threw me out of the room earlier.
Yeah. But it's it, but it has to.
But it is true, like tomorrow.
We have to stay to the agenda.
Sidebar for after.
We know it, Mike.
But I agree.
Yes.
Big lawsuit for the school district.
All right, process, anything else on the process? Are we wrapping up?
Anybody, any closing remarks that are?
Closing remarks?
Okay, one last one, I guess, is Terrence and the DAC. I'd like to thank the board for the early partnership on this and the transparency that's been happening. You're willing us to accept our advice, or at least listen to it, and take, you know, more input from the greater public. I, I just look forward to this continued partnership.
Thank you, thank you, this is great.
I just wanna say, I know in, traditionally, the superintendent is considered the sole employee of the Board of Education, and I just really, and this is the part where I, my word earlier was offer, I, I thank you for allowing us to offer our votes in this process. Thank you.
You guys are more critical than you probably realize.
Oh, yeah. I, I appreciate, I value this.
Yeah, thank you, it's really nice to meet you.
All right, so with that, we're going to adjour, adjourn this joint meeting, and we're going to take a brief break, but before anybody goes, I would like to invite all of you to stay. We're gonna rearrange tables, but I would, I would like you to, to stay in case we want to ask you questions, because you did have very valuable input. And we did not hear from everybody, and, and there are some people I would, I would like to hear from as well, so. But, so I invite you to stay, you don't have to stay, but if you would, please stay. So, we're gonna take a.
Need a motion to adjourn the work session.
Can I just say one thing, since we're talking about superintendents? I know Dr. Neal is transitioning and his last day as consulting will be the end of the year, but I wanted to say congratulations to him for his new journey and his new role in, as the Director of Kinship and Strategy for the Angel One Mac Ministry. So, if you see him out on the street, congratulate him.
All right, so do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Ellinworth.
Aye.
Kimble.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Restor.
Aye. Okay, we will take a five or 10 minute, five or 10 minute recess, and we'll be back. Thank you, everyone, thanks, thank you very much.
I appreciate you.
A lot of information.
Are you coming tomorrow night? Probably not, then.
Okay.
It's her middle email.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna go rinse my mug out.
Asking him if he's, are you going to the people? You know, said he didn't know anything.
It's pottery either in our school and it's.
It's $10. $10 and you get a bowl of soup and then you can buy. Except 5 o'clock.
So, we're just.
Yeah, thanks, man.
All right, brother, we'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow.
Dinner, dinner, I have a. Oh, it's at the U. But it's a fundraiser for the middle school.
All right, how can I help? They presented it in one of this other.
Guys going back, right? Her family, if she wants to go see, so we'll be there.
Kinda doing the U. Take this tip out.
That's what they're gonna.
You're still standing up, you haven't gone to sleep yet. Then you'll go. Boss tells you and you're not, you're not.
You gotta watch the guys that says these thoughts and all, he'll, he'll lie about other things too.
All the people that are interested. I do have some, I do have some. You're going from accounting. I'm giving him.
Sorry. If they say more than that, they're on the phone.
Okay, well, I'm going to bathroom, you don't.
My hope is that the teacher representatives on the DAC. That will happen, but if we find that there are other people, plus it. So, and the only balance then is just how many people, does it get too old to you or something?
Right, but even if you said.
We already have one person from every building. We have one teacher from every building. Maybe I'm.
We have a parent representative, but like, a principal or she's.
Yeah, Mr. Terrence is. See, I think you may be right, we have a talent tree in secondary teachers.
Just knowing that it's high as the library, could have been a part of the. Like if I wanted to. That's just coming from a teacher perspective.
And we wanna make sure that we. That'll become a hundred people.
No, and I totally understand this, but.
No, no, don't you say that.
That hasn't had a lot of.
They still have. I mean, I've heard, I know some of the other districts down there have switched recently, but it was a deal limited paying.
First year was last, this is his second.
I need a phone call with.
This is special.
That's how it works, right?
Those questions are very valuable, Sam.
Yeah, it is. That would be I to, to my chair. I had the act that retired.
How many have you got? A lot?
Of this one, this is a rich.
Well, to the owner of the coin, everyone has been. I told you when my dad. My uncle died. Week before his 21st birthday, my favorite uncle. They're saying my dad. He went back after the ring was sent. Past eight. So, they work for the board and then.
Yeah.
And I told her I was the worst child.
Are you ready to sit down? Okay, there's a table, which is nice.
I tried out with a marine business, he said for 6:00, stay where you belong, make you 6:00, yeah, go back, and he said, sure.
The chair is kinda like in.
I thank him too. Every once in a while, I get a.
Okay, we're gonna start in three minutes.
I mean, I've skied, so, Sugar Bowl, Sugar Bush.
It is, yeah, it's the same, get me out of here.
That's why I have stuff, yeah.
Think you're gonna.
Sorry, I didn't.
Uh, no, it's Mr. B.
Did he have disease?
No, he's still here. Yeah, glad you got us, there's more too.
I'll check next.
Yeah.
Your own homemade stuff?
And I'm going down, we can maintain our tree top secure, we just saw, and it just.
And business department.
I wanna start our meeting. Call this meeting to order. Here's all the directors here. Live a motion to, uh.
Guess I was asking.
Begin our next meeting.
We would love.
Over to our meeting, would you?
You already did it.
You already did that, all right, so. And we, this is part of this, for clarification, if this is the same meeting, we're just calling it back to order.
It's actually now you thought you went out of work especially for that, now you're in a special meeting because of the tax.
So, we are now in our special meeting, where we will have the opportunity to take action on the items that we discussed with, with the DAC. DAC members who stayed, I thank you, not too many stayed, but I still thank you. I don't blame you. So, in this meeting, we will be discussing our, the items that we previously discussed with the, the subcommittee. And so, Mr. Ellinworth, would you like to start into the first item, which would be the, our qual, not our qualifications, it is our, where's my notes?
The, the title qualification timeline.
The title, let's, so let's start, let's start with the title, because I think that was important. I liked what the. DAC member said, and there was a consensus pretty much about superintendent. So that it was a clear. There would be clear what we're doing. Uh, I have to say that, uh, and I understand, I thought that there were good reasons for that, and. It convinced me otherwise, I was originally leaning towards a CEO. That would make a statement that we are, we're doing something different, we would hold our current superintendents in place. And that this would be a. A leader that would step in and from outside and start making. Noticing changes, but I was convinced that superintendent was probably the better way to go in regard to that. But what I do take issue with is the interim part. That, in my mind, interim. Is, like I said before, is a placeholder. Until we find the right person. And what I, I personally, I don't want to do that, I want to find that right person. With the help of our DAC, the community. All the stakeholders involved. And that we remove that interim name from it. I think that it will help us to attract better candidates. Then it will be that people will, that the stakeholders, teachers, students, all of us involved. Will find more security, and yes, this is the person to take that. So if we're going superintendent, well, that's what I would, would ask as far as the name, so. Just throw that out there.
Um. I remain committed to the plan that we've been working on. I think it was a very fruitful discussion with the DAC. But I would like to see. The plan as encapsulated in these documents, um, approved. Uh, with just the tiny tweak, uh, that Mr. Phelan suggested. And I, I hear you on the, the interim thing, and I wanna. I, I agree with you about what we're looking for. And I want to make something clear, uh, that Ms. Lawson was pushing concern from, because I, I think what she was, was. Was saying in a very, in a very courteous way. Is that some, there are various types of buildings. There are interims, which is how I'm envisioning that, which is somebody who comes in and basically. Uh, proves themselves and earns a more long-term contract. That happens all over this country every day. There are interims, um, who are there to make sure that the, the trains run on time. And that the mission is getting done, and that, um. Is, and not to diminish in any way, but to recognize what's been going on, that's largely how Ms. Cassens and Mr. Garrick. Have been doing things as co-interim through, with the school district. Is they have been making sure that everything is functioning the way it's supposed to be, uh, accomplishing the mission of this district. And that everybody's time and work and talent is being brought to its potential. Uh, and then there are intervals that I think Ms. Lawson was getting at, which are the, uh, the hatchet man. You come in and you clean house and you fire people and you flip the tables over, and you do it because you're out. You're not gonna, you're not gonna be around to see the consequences of it. Uh, and the idea is that you, you know, you could do that with somebody and then you bring in the, you know, that's the bad cop, and then you bring in the good cop. Gonna be there for the aftermath and pick up the pieces. And, uh, that seems to be, uh, what Ms. Lawson was concerned about. Uh, looking for an interim, simply for somebody who we, we would only, I guess secretly. Envision serving a couple of months, breathing chaos or whatever, and then hitting the road. Um, I don't think that any members of this board envision this search, uh, to bring in a candidate like that. I, I envision this search to bring in somebody who, um, has a six-month window. Uh, to prove how they work with, um, our staff, how they work with the board, and how they improve. The lives and education of everybody who attends school here and works here and who depends on this school district. I, I, I hope we're bringing in somebody who's presumptively going to be, um, you know, number one with a bullet for the permanent spot. And not looking to bring in somebody who's just here to burn it all down and hit the road. That would be counterproductive to say this. Passy or.
Yes, um, so for the interim position and title, we were just talking about this, um, about. How like the salary and the benefit, this talks about how, you know, it, the term would be expiring on June thirtieth, so. Even if you have interim or not, they're gonna know that as superintendent, so if you're putting it out there, they're gonna know the interim is going to be advertising maybe a shorter window, of course. You know, this is, um. You have missions, this could be someone that would continue for, but they'll do it through that process like in June, but. It still is a very temporary, like. Contract, you know, as far as the expiring date on it. So it, I mean, if we're gonna advertise it as superintendent, then what if people legs over that and they don't even notice it, or they think it's more permanent? So I think we need to be, um, that's something we'll have to talk about too, I think, in the interview process and the finalists, you know? But when we start posting this, we need to have like a set expectation.
And I, and I do think that come back.
I'm sorry. But.
I just, I think that does come back to. If this process isn't successful enough. January, permanent.
So then, we, and we talked about that, this isn't, you know, I don't mean we want something more permanent, then you would drop that title. He posted, you know?
But I think that.
But no, that's sort of like our discussion on it, because if we don't have that term, then if we push it for that January, um. February, March, you know, timeline.
But if, yeah, and we're advertising for a permanent, that just comes with multi-year contract.
Well, not if we offer, if we can write the contract any way we want. I'm thinking if we hire, if we're going to, I just don't see the sense, I understand the goal. The goal is that we want to hire the best that we can possibly hire. And. So we want to be able to attract from the biggest pool of great candidates as we possibly can. Do you think that by having the tag interim on there will achieve that goal of having that big pool of great candidates? Or if we had superintendent with a probationary period on there? It would achieve the same goal, but the messaging would be much different to stakeholders and candidates.
I think that if we do it that way, it comes across as a bit of a bait and switch, because you're writing all that into a contract. I mean, when you advertise it as a permanent position, that just carries connotation of multi-year, permanent. We would then have to pull back and re-explain that to our candidates, I think some, there are some candidates. Is burned, does not want to do that. In terms of attracting the best and everything, I mean, that's. That's a matter of degree and circumstances, because I mean, we could up the sal- we could double the salary and attract different people than we otherwise are attracting, or we could.
Well, I'm suggesting within the parameters.
Right, I mean, that's just, I. I think that we are going to attract good candidates doing it this way. If I'm wrong, we've lost nothing, and we can do it a different way in January. Sue.
I, I agree, I think it's, um, misconceptions if we, we put it out there as a, um. A permanent or multi-year contract, and then when we go to write the contract, we're still gonna put that six months in there, I think putting interim out there in front. If, um, it's gonna be advantageous for the people that, that apply. And I think it's beneficial for the, for the district that we have that six-month of, um. Getting to know us and us getting to know him or her, um, and to say if both parties think it's beneficial for. To, I mean, a huge deal, but I, I think that that's important, to put that out there instead of. Eventually hiring someone and then get to the contract, um, part of it, and then say, you're for six months. And we're basically saying the same thing, they're an interim for six months.
I did get the sense, Sue, did you not, um, that if we're doing this and this is a successful process. That we're also promising the community that there will be another process, you know, after somebody has had a position, uh, a chance to prove themselves. Um, and it, I got the sense that that was something that, um, some members of the DAC thought was a good idea. That, okay, there's, there's gonna be time for, you know, no divided apple and more public input, and we're gonna have a better record to go with. Jumping into the deep end, um, you know, feet first, only to find if the relationship is really not quite, uh, what was expected. And, and so, I, I, I tend to think that was a, that was a good idea, or at least.
So going, revisiting, going through the entire, if we hire interim. Then we have to go through the entire hiring process and advertising process again. Should we choose to make this person a permanent superintendent?
I think we should definitely have stakeholder feedback, and it, I really enjoyed our student from the DAC and just hearing, and it feels like she also wants to have. This, the student feedback, like how do they receive this person, you know, over, you know, running the school, how do they split in, how, so, um. And we also promised them that they would have feedback afterwards, and I would like to hear that as well, so if this is such a. And if it doesn't work, if it works, we're not, you know, we're holding it.
Right, we're not gonna have a big payout.
Not gonna have a big payout.
Well, I think that there are other ways to guard against a payoff if it doesn't work than the title interim. I, I mean, I just keep hearing echoing back from people, from people on the DAC that said. If we're hiring an interim, why are we hiring an interim when we have two interns? I mean, I just keep hearing that, and. I just, I think that if we have the contract, the, the hiring contract written in such a way. We can hire a permanent. Superintendent. And I know I'm repeating myself, but we're hiring a superintendent. That. Is for promotion, probationary, probationary period. And then. Formalizing or extending the contract at that point. Rather than. The interim title. I just don't, I do don't think that we will attract the kind of people that we would want to have if they only think that it's a short-term deal. Or the potential of having a short-term deal.
Well, they know it's a short term because of the contract. That's the part like, yeah, like, I don't, I don't, I don't know.
And, and I don't understand, um, the. Well, hey. Why switch out interim, one interim or another interim or, or whatever, I mean. People are not interchangeable. Ms. Cassens and Mr. Garrick are not just, you know, interims, they're, they're, they're people with unique personalities and experience and talents. And so we, we can't just think of this idea that, well, they're interims, and so you can't bring in another interim and they can only be replaced with a permanent. Ms. Cassens plans on applying for the position one way or the other, this is about, um. This is about finalizing something in a more, uh, public way with more public input and process. When, when they became co-inroom superintendents, they really became acting co-inroom superintendents for a definite period of time, and we always said at that time. We would go through the process and basically select a leader, and it's not just the board doing it, it's, it's. It's getting that public input and bringing the public together into it, so whoever ends up. At the end of it, and like I said, you know, this one person is going to be one. I, I don't, I don't. It's, it's not to suggest that, um, they are somehow, um. Less worthy, uh, to hold the position because they are co-interims and things like that, it's.
I would say that they wear more hats probably than. One of the school at times because of the positions they have prior, and they're splitting the roles. And so, you know. Um. Yeah, I mean.
Well, I do, I recall from Tina's presentation back in, what was it? Sue, Sue, you, do you have that?
You have it.
Yeah, I have it in my packet somewhere. The presentation that she did on the process when we first started talking about hiring superintendents. And when we had already decided to go with you, with Del and Tina for superintendent, and that's kind of when this whole conversation started. About hiring a superintendent, so. And this conversation's been going on with Ford since, what?
July.
Yes, with July.
Right, and they, they came to their roles with, uh, much less process than what is envisioned here. Uh, and this, this is just, we're taking, I mean, maybe we're taking, uh, baby steps with this. Uh, but it's, it's in a way that I think is gonna make good fiscal sense, uh, to the taxpayers of this district. It's gonna make, uh, good contractual sense, um, and it's gonna provide, uh, the public much greater opportunity at input, because. If we do this process successfully and we have somebody who basically is on a six-month probationary period, the public knows. That they're gonna have to prove themselves, and the public's gonna have a chance to weigh in on whether that person gets to stay. I think that's so much better, uh, than, you know, kind of rolling the dice with a, a three-year, four-year, five-year contract of, of what we. Superintendents typically get.
And you'd say that in order to protect, to get more buy-in or more public input. To have more fiscal responsibility. That. And. That that having the title interim superintendent. Provides those benefits.
Sue, I think those are the positives that come with doing it this way.
And you think there is no other contractual way to do it?
I'm not saying there's no other contractual way to do it, but the contract is at the very end of the process, and the very end is not when you want to be. Um, nailing down, and by the way, you're okay with a six-month drop here, right, like it's, I want that, I think it should be.
That could not be presented up for.
I think interim presents that upfront. Interim is what does that, just like superintendent convenes a certain meaning, interim convenes a certain meaning, but it can certainly be made clear, um, through the. Through the process of everything, that this is, we're not looking for somebody who's six months in gone. We're looking for somebody who's here for six months and willing to be evaluated on the results they produce, uh, instead of asking us to take it all on faith.
Well, I, I hear what you're saying. I just, I disagree with it, I want the same thing, I want the same quality, so. I want the exact same thing, I, I. I disagree, and, and I, it sounds like you three are in agreement with the interim part. I think that we could do it a different way. And I just, I'll just say it for the last time, that I think that it would be better. For us. And for stability in the district, it would provide a bit more stability. To hire somebody who is the superintendent with a probationary period, so I just want to leave that on the table, that. That is my position. I think it would be better to do that.
Do you think. Probation, um, for probationary has a more negative. Pup to it than interim?
Well, see, there, I, I hear what you're saying, yes, and I. There probably, there could be a better legal way to put it. That's just, I was just saying what, uh. Mrs. Dion was saying earlier, you know, the probationary part, I was talking, thinking about a, um. What was the other phrase that I was thinking of earlier?
I think it's like at-will trial.
Yeah, like, they would be an at-will employee, that's what I wanted, that's the other.
At-will. Richard to me.
And a trial, on trial basis or something along that, but, you know, this is an at-will employment state. Isn't it?
I'm not.
Unless it's contraction, unless it's contractual. So if we had an at-will employment with that understanding going into it. And this would be something for, you know, Miller Pharma laws to work out once we tell them, so. So.
I mean, I'll, I'll just say as the, as the vacancy says, it says for a term expire on June thirtieth, twenty-three, with a mutual option to renew for subsequent years, so it's, it is upfront. I mean, whether it's interim, you know, you know, interim is a hangup, but I mean that, we're, at the end, we're talking about the same thing. And, and your concern is about, are we going to attract the kind of qualified candidates that we would be looking to select, and. I mean, you're more concerned about it than I am, but if I'm wrong, we can do this in January and we can do it a different way.
Yeah, and the other thing is.
And we're not behind, we're not behind. And we're not, and we're not behind, we're not behind A poll.
Well, yeah, we're not.
Are we ready to, well, I'm ready to make a motion.
Do we, do we? Should we vote on each one of these?
I think you guys go through all of these and this is one item. You guys can do one vote.
So I should run the discussion again? Can you hear me?
Well, I mean, Kelly, there's.
Can you hear me? I'll run the discussion. Kelly said like talk about, we should talk about all the the title, the qualifications, timeline, the things, you know, some processes, that if it's one action, we can vote on all from.
Yeah.
So.
All right, so I guess the.
Title is over.
I.
Do the scan. All right, qualifications.
I don't have anything else to add after the long discussion with the DAC.
No, I thought that that was well covered.
That was really good.
Yes, I liked what Ms. what Mr. Owen brought to it from the WPEA. I thought that those were good explanation points on the things that we have is primarily what we have for other applicants. So I I like qualifications. It was great having the input from the DAC.
I look forward to much more of that.
Yes, I do.
Okay, so timeline.
Obviously, I wanna hear from President Rusterholt, that's who was Sue. And Chris was here just because we were on the subcommittee, so it's gonna care for you guys on these types of issues and process.
I I agree with the timeline. I look back in July's minutes with board meetings, we've been discussing this since since July. And I and I know it seems to come to come up quickly, but I I agree that Christmas break will give a new, a new superintendent the ability to settle in and 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 have and be able to work with the with the admin and the teachers and the students. And we're gonna get ahead in store next year. We need to go forward on this. We've been discussing it for five months. It's time to take action. And I think it can be done within this timeframe.
Everybody gets on board.
I do have a question about the timeline. Should we see that we need to extend it at all? Is there opportunity to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the.
After.
Go ahead.
We have to have two weeks between like the selection of finalists and a vote. And in between that timeframe, you have to have public interviews. So, yeah, you can out, you can absolutely go beyond it. The goal is to make sure that a person can play and take advantage of that break to get themselves situated and ready to move forward and hit the ground running. But yeah, it can absolutely be.
Okay, so if we vote to approve this this evening, the timeline, if we find it necessary, we can extend that.
Yes.
Any portion of it.
Yep.
Okay, and then will that involve another meeting of the board to extend it? Another vote of the board to extend it?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
Yes, like we would have to get together and not the subcommittee to vote to extend this.
And it wouldn't be the first time we've had a meeting in.
Extended.
Flexibility is the key to air power, they used to say in the Air Force.
I don't know. For the Air Force.
Anything else?
No, I just, you know, hearing the the DAC, you know, they were talking about timeline. I felt like there wasn't a specific that they said, just as long as I think it was fluid and and that they were also a part of it for the finalists. And we have that timeline December 8th to the 20th, so that will allow us to sort of have that scheduling to schedule with the board and the DAC for those. If that helps.
Yeah. Built within this, there is something that I would like to see to make sure that we do make part of this. Because like we've had in other topics before, we did, like you said, Dave, we've had a lot more meetings that we ended up scheduling. I would like to see a lot more public forum or more public forum built into this. If we have to have some more meetings and like what we have with the DAC, but like town hall type things that we did before.
Yeah, and and I agree and anticipate that the the timeline is kind of the bare bones of what has to be done and when it has to be done. It has these spaces where we can add things like that and we can adjust to the immediate sort of changing circumstances. But I didn't wanna get bogged down in the one we started with. I mean, God bless where we put that together. It was hard to follow it. And it becomes a thing where like if you adjust one thing, it kind of messes everything up. It was like a spider web where you didn't wanna pull one string. So this is like simplified and this allows us to set those sorts of things and and do that sort of stuff. So this can be not just expanded, but it can, it can be, well, can, it can be expanded in the number of things that we do, not just the overall length.
Yeah, the other one was very.
Go ahead, go ahead.
No, the other one was very detailed and it was great, but we we did simplify it so we can add those. We just should not know when that date would be. And so anticipating, I'm glad you brought it up because we just, you know, looking at the timeline, we wanna sort of see how the process goes and where are the applicants and then the Google meet and hopefully sometime in between there.
Okay, here, here's, I'm glad to hear that. What I would like to see us do is, since this is the Christmas season and there's lots of programs going on at the church, at the churches and all the school, all the school grades and things, we should, I would like to ask the subcommittee to look at our school calendar and find dates where will fit in that parents and staff and teachers don't have to pick between a town hall and their kid's Christmas program and choir and, you know, marching, they are banned and whatever there is and plays and all the things that are going on. So what, if you guys would do that and get that right away so we can get that posted so people have a lot, lot of time to know when we're gonna have those things.
Sure, and I think that Tina and Del and Kelly are experts on those sorts of things as well, like what events are happening, what facilities might be available. And then, of course, you as the president can set that anytime you have that. I I think, I think it would be appropriate to have at least one, maybe two town halls you know, between the eighth and the 21st. Like I, you know, my thinking is a town hall before the board and DAC interview so that we've gotten that kind of, we've really maximized the input that's out there. That's not just gonna influence us, but it's gonna influence the other members of the committee that are asking questions of the finalists. And may, you know, maybe we could do a town hall after the interview, you know, then before the final vote. Or maybe, maybe the final vote meeting is, you know, I think we, didn't we do that? We did something similar to that with mayor, like a meeting that's essentially a town hall and it ends, you know, with a vote at the end. So but that that would give us at least two.
Well, I would like to have at least two. I think that having the town hall meeting on the night that we vote, I think that, didn't we get, we got pushback about that, that it was just like it was kind of a, a lot of people thought it was a formality that.
Right, right, right. To pay the complete.
Yes, I would like to have it before that so that we can hear from the people. I think we need to hear, listen, think about it, vote. So, you know, rather than have it, because that that was part of the criticism that we received. And I thought, you know, yes, you're right.
Well, I don't think I was right.
Well, no, I bet that their feelings were right.
Because it was not that way and different people felt different things about it.
Yes.
At the end of the day, it's up to each board member to know how much reflection they need and and, you know, what's gonna seal the deal or be a deal breaker for them. Perfectly capable of listening to somebody and making a decision after that and this will be the end of a long process. So I I hear what you're saying and there's nothing wrong in what you're saying. Just color to be skeptical is is like that's the only correct way to do it in terms of
I hear what you're saying.
having a town hall and then there has to be some sort of mandatory cooling off period or something like that. We don't agree with that in theory. It may be the best practice. Anyway, that's a matter of theory. So I hear it. That's it.
All right, any other discussion about the timeline other than, so just to have it cleared?
I have.
You got, oh, go ahead.
Oh, no, I was just gonna reiterate what you said about how the subcommittee should look into the school calendar. My dates of parents, staff, teachers and administration can attend. So we're not having the overlap in dates with the end or Christmas presents or anything else. One, two, you minimum, you would like two?
I would like, I think we should have two because it's such a jam-packed time of the year that if they can't make one, they have an opportunity for another.
We have a second one. Good, good. So. Did I gather your notes correctly and thoughts or?
Got it.
Okay.
Is there any other discussion about the timeline? Does anybody want to revisit any of the other two areas?
The vacancy notice, processed, qualifications. We do need to talk about the changes so that bottom, the vacancy, just the suggestions we had from the DAC. So we all agree with adding preliminary interviews with selected candidates will be conducted prior to December 6th.
Can you read that one? Read what you.
Yeah, you can roll your pen. Thank you. I need your paper, thank you. Um, I am reading it right now.
Okay.
All right, so the admin or, you know, the DAC suggested preliminary interviews with selected candidates will be conducted prior to December 6th, 2022. And it does say the 7th, but considering because it says here the 6th, the screen applications, if you look at our timeline, identify applicant pool, set up Google meet interviews, so that's the 6th.
The 30th of the 6th, so you would.
Oh, prior, well.
If you said prior to 6th, you would be cutting off the 6th, we'd lose a day. So it has to be prior to 7th because 7th is the meeting where we would select finalists. So I I think it's correct. That that day is correct.
Okay, so correct. All right.
We got, we got Kelly.
But he did say, he did suggest adding the word virtual.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, add to the virtual.
Will be conducted virtually prior to, so just add.
Yes, and then the in-person finalists interviews with the Board of Education and the representatives, representation.
And other district representatives.
Yes, other district.
Since we asked the DAC to stay here and in case I had a question, I do have a question. Did we get that quote correct?
Yes, sir. Can I? Can I suggest?
Don't believe me. Wait, the auto them with that, oh no. Will be conducted between the 38th and December 20th. Which way is that?
Good. So my only suggestion is that in-person be inserted between, between conducted in between. So that finalists interviews with the Board of Education and other district representatives will be conducted in-person between.
Yeah, okay, I like that more.
Still in person.
Their interviews, selected candidates will be conducted virtually prior to December 7th. Finalist interviews with the Board of Education will be, oh, and district representatives um, will be conducted in-person between December 8th and December 20th.
And dates are subject to change.
All right.
I didn't, I didn't.
Do any other edits that were suggested?
We thank the DAC for helping us with that. Thank you.
Any other conversation about these three topics before we take a vote? So will we be voting on all three? Kelly?
Yes, with the with the edits you guys mentioned.
Okay, and you have all those edits?
I do.
Kelly. Anything we're missing? Kelly. Del. All right, do I have a motion?
Yes, I move that we approve the superintendent hiring process as discussed with the edits just discussed in accordance with the how it's set out under Roman numeral 7A.
Second.
Roll call.
Illemor.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
All right, went out of order, I'm sorry. Illemor, Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Rusterholt.
Aye.
All right. Is there anything else we need to discuss? That was our action item, 7A. We are at eight. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Oh, second.
Second.
Roll call.
Illemor.
Aye.
Kimbrel.
Aye.
Patterson.
Aye.
Rusterholt.
Now.
Aye. I always wanna say that.
I see, you always do.
49, let's go.
Thank you for everybody.
Thank everyone.